Okay, so we're powered up.
Okay.
Flight's right behind you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Ms. Willetts, we're good to go? Okay. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for Tuesday, December 6th. I'll ask at this time in respect to the decorum of the meeting that phones are silenced or turned off. And now I ask all to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our future meetings include the town board meeting, which will occur on January 9th at 7:30 PM here in the town office. It will also be broadcast via Zoom. The planning commission will meet on Monday, January 30th at 7:30 PM here in the town office. It will also be available on Zoom. Anybody have any other meetings they need to announce? No? Okay, so at this time, we now turn to our meeting items. My hope is everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes from our November 7th and November 21st meeting. Do we have any changes or comments, Mr. Ritz?
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. President. On page six of the minutes at the very top, this is in reference to Agenda Item Number Two. I know we had some issues that evening with the the recording, so it's difficult to go back and to review those. My memory has that there were, there were actually two motions made regarding that ordinance, regarding ordinance number 22-10. My memory serves, I don't know if it's correct or not, I thought that I made a motion to approve that ordinance as written. There was no second. And then, after a little discussion, you asked if there was a motion to deny the ordinance as written, to which I made that motion. And I believe Commissioner Bowman-Palit quickly seconded that, and then it came to vote. I could be wrong. That's, that's how my memory went that night. I don't know if anyone else thinks the same.
So, I'm trying to talk with Clark here. I know we pressed for a motion because there was not going to be a motion at all. And what do you recall?
I actually share Commissioner Ritz's recollection of how that sequence went.
Thank you.
So, um, yeah, it's unfortunate that whatever happened in the recording, it made, it made it difficult.
Can't go back and verify it. I get that.
So what you're saying is you made an emotion?
The, the motion was made to approve the ordinance as written, and then there was no second.
Okay.
So at that point, the motion was made to deny the ordinance as written, to which it was seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palit.
Okay. Okay.
And then the vote count
is correct.
Is correct for, for, for that. There obviously was no vote for the first one because there was no second.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely make, add that to it.
And then I, I didn't have anything else. That, that was the only thing that jumped out at me.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for the correction.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding the minutes from either meeting? Nope, okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as modified?
I assume there is.
All right, is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palit. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, are we, that was, that was only for November 7th. We're going to handle the 21st next. There are two two minutes to approve the night.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, okay. Then I have no further discussion for me.
For the first. Okay, very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Okay. Modifications to the second meeting's minutes, Mr. Ritz?
I had, looked fine to me.
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the 21st as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero, all commissioners present. So we move forward. Deputy, we turn to you for the deputy's report, for the police report.
Good evening. So, monthly report for November, six holidays used, one sick day, police one training, we had fall qualifications. Tree fell on my new cruiser, so they're working that out. 3,000 miles, I know, I want to talk about it. We handled 371 calls for service. There was one arrest, 119 traffic stops, 17 win cards completed. In regards to the email that was sent to me over the weekend, as of about an hour ago, I've identified all four individuals' response for the vandalism to the town. They will be formally interviewed tomorrow, if their parents present, and charges will be proceeding after that, juvenile referrals. So that is taken care of as of about an hour ago.
Thank you.
No problem. No problem.
Any questions for the deputy?
You know, the fall shooting qualifications, that's the same as deer hunting?
I wish.
Asking for a friend.
You were not in the car when the tree fell, I trust?
I was. I was driving, actually. Yeah.
You're okay, I hope?
Yeah, I was good.
Very good.
But not my car.
No. No. Better you, good car, not.
Right, yeah.
It's the better of the two scenarios. Okay, terrific. Uh, any other items? No. Thank you, sir. Greatly appreciated. Okay, we now turn to the town manager for the town manager's report.
Thank you. Uh, this is town manager's report for October. I'll highlight some key such, uh, areas in each section related to the streets. Staff assisted a contractor pouring new sections of sidewalk in front of 10207 West Main Street, as well as 304 East Main Street. The contractor repainted all the parking spaces and renumbered them on Welty Avenue. Staff numbered all the new fire hydrants and streetlights on Irishtown Road, and also put it additional speed limit signs on the new section of Irishtown Road. Uh, staff cleaned and repainted parking spaces on Irishtown Road from North Seaton to Emmett Court. For parks, they replaced a section of the board fence in the Eugene Myers Park. Staff weed ate trimmed trees and weed killed around the stormwater pond in the Eugene Myers Park. And they also trimmed and weed killed shrubs, trees on the east side of Ballfield Number Three parking lot. Related to water, at the time of this report, Rainbow Lake was 1.8 feet below the spillway level. However, today it is 14.5 feet or 2.1 feet below the spillway level. We would like to continue with Phase One voluntary water restrictions. As you can see, the well levels for wells one through five. Water production and consumption, we produced an average of 242,515 gallons per day and consumed an average of 256,824 gallons per day. The amount of backwash in September, or it should read October, is 15, was 15.75%. We purchased 442,600 gallons from Mount St. Mary's. For wastewater, we treated an average of 373, 373,206 gallons per day, consumed roughly 256,824, which meant 31.18% of the wastewater treated was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage. However, we did exceed the plant's design capacity three, three times in the month of October. We received 3.7 inches of precipitation. We currently have a surplus of 4.27 inches over the last six months. Trash, trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of December, except for the Christmas holiday. Trash will be picked up Tuesday, December 27th. I highlighted some of the meetings that I attended in October. Some noteworthy items, staff conducted hydrant flushing throughout town with no discolored water complaints. Staff had to go up to four backwashes at the water plant due to the quality of the lake water, because it is so far below the spillway level. Staff pressure tested the sewer lines at rudders and both lines passed. I did work on, I have some planning updates. I don't have a planner's report for myself, but some of the planning updates I worked on, I did some backflow preventers, two permits, working on MS4 and stormwater with the tree plantings in the Silo Hill Stormwater Basin Grant. Working with Chris Chubiac on the Federal Stone Summittals and Rutter's Forest Conservation. Richard Demet will be submitting a bond reduction in January. Worked with Village Liquors on their permitting and bonds. Worked with Leslie Powell and her staff on court cases and issued several parking permits. And that was my month.
Any questions for the town manager related to the report?
I have one.
Ms. Bowman-Palit?
Um, this is just a, a quick follow-up. I, I know there was a gentleman that I think came in in September about Irishtown Road and, and the need for speed limit signs. And I may be remembering incorrectly, but were we going to be looking into a flashing speed limit sign?
So, um, I don't know if she did it yet. I have to look at Ms. Shaw's report. We are submitting for a grant for two speed trailers that we would be able to move around and place on different streets that would alert drivers to their speed. So we are working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Would the trailers cite for speed violations, or are they just?
No, they're just, just advisory.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis, yes, sir.
Um, a couple of months ago, you spoke about some stormwater problems at the Fire Academy, the FEMA facility that might be causing.
Oh, the, for the, for the INI?
Yeah, has any of that?
As, as far as staff can tell, it seems to have been repaired and corrected.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney?
I have no.
Commissioner Ritz?
For clarification, what is INI?
Inflow and infiltration into the sewer lines. If you have pipes that are in need of repair, this is why we do sewer relining every year. Cracks, holes, tree branches that intrude into the sewer lines or your sewer system then allows water to get into your sewer lines, which then can flood our pump station and cause us to overflow with the pump station, as well as the wastewater treatment plant.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, someone, I could hear someone in the crowd ask what that was, so.
Sometimes take it for granted.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff related to the manager's report? A quick item, the bridge in the park, has that been completed?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Weather has not cooperated.
Okay.
They're working on it.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we now turn to commissioners for commissioner comments. Commissioner Bowman-Palit?
Do you want to go?
Hold on, what is it? Oh, town planners' report, are we doing that? Because I thought.
Do you want to do, I have a few updates on the grand administrator report, and then I do have Chris Chubiac's report.
Okay.
Um.
I misunderstood what you said, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Off we go.
Um. Some things that she wanted me to highlight for the USDA Public Works Grant, we're still waiting on the truck to be delivered. She's still working on the GOCCP grant for the ALPRs and camera. The Creamery Road Pump Station, the final building permit, MD should have that completed December 13th. Once USDA signs the plans, then it will go out to bid for construction, finally. Some new grants she did submit for, here it is, on the Department of Housing, Community Development, Business District and Neighborhood Safety Grant for 85,000 to purchase two new portable radar speed trailers and two surveillance cameras for the square. And then the Citizen Storage Ship Grant for 5,000 to purchase four pet waste stations and three recycling containers to be installed at various locations. The upcoming grants apply for the state aid for police protection, additional funding for our streetlight replacement. And then the Chesapeake Bay Trust Green Streets Grant, that's for the Green Street Project on North Seaton, as well as the water line replacement. And then some other various fundings, one for the funding remaining for the Paul Street Water Line.
Any questions for staff related to the grant report and the planning report? Commissioner, yes?
Um. I went on, went ahead and looked at the visit emmitsburg.com, and I think it looks fabulous. So I wanted to ask, since it's listed under grants, does that mean it's one-time money and it will be a stagnant page, or is that something that will be regularly added to, or how does that work?
I would have to ask Maddie what the, what what the actual restrictions are on the grant. I would imagine it's probably for a one-year grant and maintenance that there might be some things that we have to do with it, but I'll follow up and let everybody know.
Okay, um, because I poked around a bit and I really liked what I had to see. Looking at visit thermont.com, I noticed that their page also has a business section. I didn't know if that was in the works or something that could be considered in the future, or is that really grant dependent?
Okay, I'll find out. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so now we turn to commissioner comments. Thank you, Mr. Ritz, again. Commissioner, we'll start with you.
I'm back on again. Yes. Okay. Um, I attended the tree lighting and it was absolutely fabulous. I really enjoyed seeing, you know, community faces there. The music was fabulous. Having the connection with the Ukraine sister city was very touching and moving, and I feel like it really brought our community together. So overall, I want to extend my thanks to town staff and everybody who participated to make that happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Um, yeah, same thing. Great, great program last night here at the town office and also the carriage house and the Fields family for the part they had at the carriage, at the carriage house for the kids. I think they all enjoyed that. So, and just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney?
I also was at the tree lighting and the carriage house afterwards. It was a great night. The town Christmas party for the town from the Lions Club will be this Saturday on the 10th, from 10 AM to 1 PM. And, and everyone's invited, all ages. We will have food and hot chocolate and all kinds of activities for them to do, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, pictures. At the end, it doesn't cost anybody anything. It's all free. It's at the, it's at the Power Academy, I mean, the Fire Company's Activity Building in Creamy Road. And it will be 10 to 1. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ritz?
I have nothing. Thank you.
I'm dumbfounded. Okay, thank you, sir. I'll be quick. Uh, I just want to look back and say Merry Christmas to everybody first and foremost. It's been a dynamic year, 2022, for sure. We reopen our community. We have a move forward regarding our dynamic staffing situation, and I think we've moved forward in a great direction. We wish those who departed well, and we hope for the best from those who've joined us. The Turkey Trot itself was a success. We had 62 runners and walkers participate. That went well. Considering it was sort of a soft reopening of the community, I think it was pretty astonishing. We raised in excess of $850 for the Seaton Center and its North County Outreach Programs. So hopefully we'll see dividends from that in our community every day. To the point of thanking folks, I wanted to thank the mayor, the board, town staff, the vigilante hose company, the deputy, the fire police volunteers, and a handful of other volunteers who helped out and who made it possible. We are very grateful for their assistance. I would argue that the trails grew in popularity this year as, as defined by their increased usage. We had more events on the trails from outside groups wanting to come there and use them, and that was, I think, a feather in our cap as a community. People want to be here and spend money. And we move forward into 2023. As you well know, we have some challenges ahead, but we have a lot of opportunities ahead. So Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, and with that, I turn it over to the mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, sir. I hope you all had a happy Thanksgiving, wonderful and blessed Thanksgiving. A lot of events in the month, but just to highlight a few, we did have the ceremony on Friday, November 11th, 11 AM, the Veterans Day, the Honor Guard, bought the weather and made two visits, one to St. Joseph's and one in front of the American Legion. It was just to keep going, but that, that tradition played, played on. It was wonderful to be there. There was an Ukrainian Icons lecture at the Nod Arena by Katharina Govegan, who teaches at, at McDaniel, McDaniel's College, University, and it was really a splendid event. Ms. Shaw, our grant administrator, and I met with Maryland Main Street staff for a tour of the town. And that's our next step. We are a Main Street affiliate, and we're proceeding with that and to see how the town grows and if it can responsibly fund a, that addition to our, our PR arsenal. Let's see, Mother's Seaton School, fourth grade, did that again. That was wonderful, and we're trying to set something up with the elementary school over here. Just talked about mayor and the, and it's just wonderful to get out there and, and show some slides. I want to thank Ms. King for joining me and working with me on that presentation. Conrad Weaver and I met with Michael Zorkin, who is hand carrying our sister city proclamation to let's Ukraine, as we speak, to give to the mayor, and you, you should bring back a flag. We hope so also. This Monday, the 28th, we interviewed a planner, Ms. Hadaway, Ms. Willetts, and I, and Chris Chukubiac. It was a terrific event last night. It started out the library, you know, ringing the bells and little food trinkets there and, and also warmth, and they shared, and I'd like to stay up there, Kathy Bodine, Bill Atul, Diane Walbrecker, I think Norrie O'Donnell was played a part in all this, bringing that about, that special thing for the Ukrainian people. And we had our guests, we had spoke here at the event, Ms. Randall from Kettysburg, Ukrainian, and now a US citizen, he gave a talk, and we had a blessing from the Greek Orthodox priest in the town. They have a small community here, and they're, they're affiliated with the Church of you, Orthodox Church of Ukraine, a prominent religion there. Price Community Church, Emmitsburg Community Corral, Carriage House, the Corral saying that it's Ukrainian, the carol, the bells we hear every Christmas. Let's see, Ukrainian carol that goes back in time. It was, it was really nice to do that for them, and then they go and Santa Claus, Frank Schmier's hall is there, and he took everybody down to our wonderful friends at the carriage house. A beautiful tree. That tree was donated by Kathy Willis' father, who has a tree farm, and and it's a terrific tree, and it's grown in satchel over about four years ago, and it's just gotten bigger and bigger, and a beautiful tree in form. And it's, it certainly was wonderful to have that, and I, I just wish everybody a very Merry, Merry Christmas. We have, we have a lot of blessings out here. The things we're doing in the town and bumpy sometimes, but, you know, you know, the, they say perfect's the the, well, it's, it's the opposite of, of good, and we're, we're human, and we'll, we'll settle for really good, but keep striving for perfection. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, now we turn to public comments. For clarification, we have individuals who signed up for public comment about non-agenda items. So that's what this public comment is about. When we move into the agenda items, we'll invite the folks who signed up for specific agenda items. For example, the water rate discussion. We'll invite people to comment at that time about the water rate piece, so I hope we have clarity there. Okay, so moving from here, at this time, I invite Mr. Sloan forward to discuss maintenance of infrastructure. Mr. Sloan?
I'm Eric Sloan. I live in the big yellow house down across from Dollar General. And this town, like every other town its age, and every other, even industrial facilities, you have to start looking ahead at when you're going to have to replace things. What do we have to replace versus going to the state or going to the county replace? And the sewer system is a prime example of 50 years too late. How many of these lines are past being scoped and filled? How many abandoned houses were torn down? And nobody made sure the sewer connections weren't shut off, were filled with concrete? Because that'll give you a four-inch opening full of rainwater every time it rains. Water lines that are decrepit and getting ready to go away. The roads and everything else have to be maintained on a timely basis. You know, need to look forward to what we're going to have to do in 10 years, that we're going to have to do in 20 years. This isn't the 10-year plan like the Soviets had that failed. This is a plan of this water line will be good until this time. Then we have to replace it. We have to start figuring out the money for it now. Not 10 years from now on, well, maybe we'll get a grant for it, because at one point in time, it's going to dry up, and you're not going to be able to go, hey, can we get money for this? They're going to, you go, no. And when we run out of being able to update the sewer system, you're not going to be able to put more water into it because the plans weren't made. You know, it's, it's going to be an ugly thing. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I invite B. Riddenhour on the same subject.
That reminds on me of the water increase.
Okay, all right, so yours is related to the, oh, very good, okay. Okay, and for L. Miller, is that also correct? Okay, terrific, thank you. All right. Great, okay, so it looks like everyone, Mr. Ebaugh, yes, sir. Okay. Come on up, you're, I have you listed for water rate and I'm afraid I can't. Okay.
Are you talking to?
No, no, I'm, I'm talking to Ms. Ness. Yes. Okay.
Hello, Rebecca Ness. I reside at 4070 Carrick Court. My, Tim already knows what I'm going to talk about, because I mentioned it in the Pembroke HOA meeting. At the last town meeting I was able to attend, which was a while ago, I advocated for the no parking signs to be put on Irishtown, and I'm glad they are there. Although I will say some homeowners are still abusing it, Deputy A. Hall, if you want to look out. And they're parking in the lane right there, which clearly marked a bike lane. My concern is actually, why were the no parking signs put up on Brookfield Drive between Timber Mill Road and Carrick Court? As that strip is used for the overflow, poor Pembroke, our streets are not wide enough to park on. So when we have people over, we use that section of Brookfield Drive in between Carrick and Timber Mill to park. And for some reason, when they put the no parking signs on Irishtown, I can understand why they might have want to come in a little bit where the new entrance is, but why they went all the way down to Carrick and bust basically eliminated all the parking. I don't ever recall that being mentioned, why that was being done. So that's my only concern, is that then we do have the people who live in Carrick or, or Pembroke, I should say altogether, that if they have someone over, unfortunately, they do, like what happened this weekend. The person who lives on Brookfield had his family over right at the end of Carrick, the police officer, and they all just parked down in the swale, then they're going to damage the swale, damage the yard, or they're going to risk someone hitting their car coming in because they're parked on a street that's too small. Also, I think this is above a town issue, but 3115 Stonehurst Court, that house was bought in August of 2022. The board and Claggett, who is our HOA consultant, were aware that it was bought by someone who was going to use it as their residence. It has been brought to our attention by homeowners that live around that house, that he is not living there. He is renting it out to college students, but if you go on to the Maryland Department of Assessment and Taxation, he is falsely accusing that he is living there, probably just to claim his homestead tax credit. So I didn't know if that needed to be brought to anyone's attention, or I can tell you, speaking from the Pembroke Board, our next step is when HOA fees go out next year, we will send it to the Stonehurst address, and if we don't get our fees, that's when we will have to move on to a certified lever or wait for the fees to increase before we turn it into a legal matter.
Thank you. Staff for the parking question related to Brookfield Drive, is that?
So it's my understanding, I need to do some more research on that, but I had conversations with Mr. Golden before he left, and, and it's our understanding that it's deemed a collector road, and if it's a collector road by county standards and town standards, you cannot allow parking on a collector road. I have to do a little bit more research on that, but that's the, the short answer.
Okay, thank you.
While you're looking into that, if.
We have, we have a question from staff for a second. A technical issue, or are we?
We are having a technical issue with the.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead.
Mr. Davis, the floor.
If we could also find out if it is a collector road, what makes it a collector road and how we could get that changed?
Yeah, I, my understanding, it was all done when the properties were sold, the development was done and they were things that were approved probably by a former planning commission and former board of, board of commissioners. But I'm going to have to do my homework on that one. I don't, I don't know for sure, but I'll look into it and get some answers.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Eva, thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you, President, members of the Commission. I'm, my wife and I are mainly here and I'm really, I'm really almost appalled that there's not more people here to talk about the water rates, but we'll get to that down the road. First thing though, that I can ask about is the corner of DePaul and North Seaton. I've been before you once or twice about that, this problem. President Tim O'Donnell, I know that you asked Zach Golden, what, he said it was being addressed. I know you asked him in a meeting. I watched it on TV. He's addressing it with the Green Street and North Seaton Avenue program. That's where it was going to be addressed. My understanding, there's no money for that program. That was a the document that I saw here and got from Zach is a, is, is, is a concept drawing. So nothing's been addressed. I'm still waiting for somebody to get clipped and get killed. And then it's going to be a big issue. That's the only reason I bring it here. You can't have aside, you can't have a people getting out on DePaul Street in a handicap spot and have to go out in North Seaton Avenue to get on the sidewalk and on North Seaton to go to church or to go downtown. We are working further into Paul Street to come up with a plan to get people on the sidewalk. I'll be straight up with that. That's still not addressing what's on the corner. Needs addressed immediately. We have over $9 million or you, you, the town does and save in their bank account. You'll talk about it here in a while. Let's get it done and get this thing put to rest. I've been dealing with this forever, three years. It's time enough. Secondly, I disagree with the storm order. And I know it's passed the MS4. I know Frank's got a real problem with that. I think we all do. What happens if we don't pay it? Because I can guarantee you, no one in this building can show me that every other community in the state of Maryland is abiding by that. It does not have to happen. They can do close town down. I know you can't answer any of my questions. It's funny to me, people bought all these real nice houses facing Irish Town Road. I welcomed them to town, had no problem. They're beautiful homes. Very first thing they want the services. They want Deputy A. Hall up on the hill, traffic, traffic concern, speeding. What did they think they were going to get when you have a hill popping up on there? I mean, what do people think when they, you crest that hill? First of all, you can't let your kids play in a front yard, but I get it. But so I'm going to join the parade. I've lived at 47 to 39 Federal Avenue for, since 1983. The speed limit backwards, anybody know what the speed limit is on that street?
15.
15 miles an hour. For instance, I set out the other day and redid my navigation on my car. Took me 50 minutes. Every car that went by there, I guarantee you, if he was sitting there, he would have rode every car up on the street. 15 mile an hour from DePaul to the bottom. It's a racetrack through there to work it. Just. There's another part that I need to look into. I've already told Jim about it. Everybody here, other Miss Paul, and by the way, congratulations on coming to on the board.
Thank you, I think.
No, you're fine. You're fine. This is just me. I get excited when I talk. I don't mean anything by it. When the state put the sidewalk in front of the church on this side facing us, the church has two downspouts that came under the sidewalk. That pipe went out to the front of the church across the cemetery underground at, empty underneath the sidewalk on the North Seaton Avenue. Unbeknownst to me, they did away with it. What's happened? I've been pumping sump pump water out of the basement of the church because now both downspouts come down. It can't get out the storm drain, out the drain to daylight, which is the street. It would run down in front of E. Aaron's Plus and go in the stormwater drain there. That's blocked off. The state blocked it off. I don't care if you blocked it off. It either needs to be addressed or I'm going to dump the water right down on North Alley. And in the winter time, it's going to freeze up there and there's going to be another problem. What it's done to the church, we're pumped some pumping water out of the base now because it's going to go to the least resistance, which is the hole under the church. Two, it's busted every piece of sidewalk on that south side of the church. We're going to stand to pay for that. It needs addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ritz.
Miss, well, it's the, the, the comment regarding the money for Green Street. Worst, are we still on track for that? So it's open in 23 because I remember one of the things Mr. Golden said that the earliest that might happen would be 2024, but that's not a guarantee. Okay. I just wanted to know if anything changed because that was, that was a good point. And we haven't heard anything about that for a while. So I wanted to check in on that. Okay. Thank you.
So we're still talking a couple of years till it's ever done or completed. Correct. We're probably talking 25, 26, 27.
For the water lines?
Well, for the whole project.
Probably not that long, but probably, probably two years. I had a conversation with, with Sam Delarance at State Highway that I thought he was going to work on addressing this as well. So I need to go back and follow up with him and see where he left off and then go back through the notes that were left over from Zach to see where we are with everything. On, on both of these issues, I don't, this was the first I heard about the water underneath the sidewalk and the sump pump and, and such.
Yeah, it's kind of strange that we fixed all the, the handicap accesses around town and we left that one go. When we were still talking, you know, at that time, three, four, or five years out. So we, we need to, we need to move on that if we can, please.
So staff will be able to have a conversation with State Highway regarding the sidewalk issue and the drainage issue. Is that correct? Terrific. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for staff or comments related to public comment? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on. Okay, so at this point, we close general public comments. We move to administrative business. Okay, so we turn to staff related and the topic related to free holiday metered parking for consideration.
Yeah. So as, as you know, the Board of Commissioners each year approve free metered parking on East and West Main Street during the holiday season. In reviewing what you guys have done in the past and at the mayor's recommendation, the recommendation would be to begin free metered parking Friday, December 9th, which would be this Friday through Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. And I, I do not remember. I know you, you guys make a recommendation for the monies to be donated. I would just need to know.
Mr. Sweeney, I think it was the Lions Club for the fireworks fund.
It was a lot. Yeah, it was the Heritage Day. It was the library.
Okay.
And I think it was Seaton Center.
Seaton Center, so.
It's an equal split.
A third jail.
Please. And it would be Lions Club, the Seaton Center and Friends of the Emmitsburg Library.
Make that a motion.
Second.
Thank you. I was ready for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. Anybody against? No Scrooge? Okay, good. Motion carries five to zero. We move on. All right. Staff, we now turn to you for the discussion related to the farmer's market land for larger community garden plot.
I would turn this over to Commissioner Bowman-Palat at her suggestion. Or, yeah.
Just a little bit of background. It did come up at Citizens Advisory Committee that we have a more substantial community garden that would allow. I think the one that we have before has very limited things that we can plant and it is very small. But if we had a larger plot of land, we might be able to add vegetables and it could potentially tie into community work and the library having activities around that part, that land. And then hopefully, if we can get the farmer's market revitalized, potentially even be able to bring those vegetables and whatnot over to our farmer's market. So there's a, there's a big vision there. They were just looking for a small piece of land to try to expand that.
Great. Okay, that's a great proposal. Ms. Willetts, any staff feedback regarding where we might consider for that? Another discussion was the farmer's market plot, perhaps.
Right. And I've had some emails exchanges with Mr. Death Ridge. At this point, I don't see from just an initial, take a look at it. I don't see a reason why that lot could not be used, the backside of that lot could not be used for a larger community garden. That's just my initial review of it. I don't see there's a reason why there couldn't be, as long as there's, you know, we still need to maintain some parking between both the farmer's market and the, say, the community garden for people. Just understanding there is no water access there. So there's certain things that would have to be worked through, but like I said initially, I don't see why that couldn't happen.
Okay, Commissioner.
Just a quick question for Mr. Death Ridge, if that's okay. Are you still interested in pursuing that based on, based on your research? I just want to be clear before we go through.
So good evening, sir. I'll ask you to introduce yourself and then.
Jack Deathridge, the legit idiot, and tonight we'll prove it again. I've spoken to a master gardener who told me to run away from that piece of ground because of the lack of water. There's probably rubble under it. We'd have to build on top of it, which just encourages me to do it even more because I've disproven master gardeners a number of times and I don't see any reason why we couldn't do it this time. I've also tramped around the Gettysburg Community Garden. I think we can do a better job than they did. I wanted it to be a show garden. The master gardener says there's no such thing as a show garden, community garden. I'd like to prove a wrong on that one, too. I talked to the mayor of Thurmont. They've really gone out of their way for their community garden. And he says every year there are fewer gardeners. However, I've been to his garden. It's not an easy location. I can understand why people avoid it. He thought our plot here would be a great place just because of its location. So the water is the issue. Getting people together that actually want to do it is an issue. I mean, this is Emmitsburg. I've lived here long enough to know how people are. So if I get to go ahead, I'd like to go out, stick a fork in it, see what's under the sod. I did some research to test for heavy metals. We're looking at $30 per sample. I can hear my wife right now. If I ask her for 10 samples, that's not going to go over big. But I have been talking to a few people who have ideas as to how we can build this as inexpensively as possible. Whether they show up and do anything, who knows? I mean, I'd, I'd like to try it if the town wants to try it.
Okay, just wanted to verify before we went through.
Yeah, it's my, my guts telling me run, but I'm not that smart. So I'd like to take a shot at it and see.
So the size of the plot, under consideration, it would be a divided plot. So the farmer's market would stay there, parking would be in place. And then that would still.
Map up on a county site and it's 104 feet across the back. And I'm thinking maybe 80 feet across that, maybe coming 25 feet in, and that leaves all the rest of it for the farmer's market.
Terrific.
Now about the water, somebody suggested the fire museum or this building, but I don't know who's in charge of the water in either of those places. So.
County?
I don't know if we could tap into that or not.
So there are, it's our water system. The county obviously pays fire museums bill.
Definitely tap into that one then.
Say we solve that problem.
I, I had, I had the editor of the paper remark about building a platform and putting water tanks on it. Now, that would work great if we had a building that was supplying it, but there's no building sitting there supplying it. So the town would have to haul water and fill the tanks, which is what they do in Thurmont.
So a pavilion for the farmer's market and
could help.
Collection tanks for a market, a garden.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of possibilities. And there'll be a lot of opinions as to what the garden should be.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Your needs. Okay. Anybody else? Thoughts? No? Okay. So Ms. Willetts, what do you need from us? Is this a action item or will this come back to us at a future meeting so we can vote on this or?
So I'd need a plan.
Okay.
I mean, I'm certainly not, I don't know how to design a garden. I don't have a green thumb. But I mean, some sort of plan, some sort of ideas, what we're looking at, what, what the town needs to supply. I mean, obviously I can talk to Dean and Jared about, you know, we, we did put a a yard hydrant up in one of the square boxes to, so the water, the plants up the square. Is that feasible there? I'd have to talk to, to staff about that one. But a basic plan, size, what, what is needed? You know, the soil, you know, is it, is it even a viable spot? What do we need to do? And then we can bring that back to the board for discussion or approval. I don't know if Citizens Advisory Committee wants to take it over and then come up with a recommendation to staff. I know that would probably speed the process up.
Great. Okay, Commissioner.
We, I mean, we absolutely could. I mean, I guess the question would be knowing that it's pending the plan, would he still be able to stick a fork in it and see what's under the grass?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's, it's town property. It's, it's fine. I don't think anybody's going to get upset by that. Okay.
All right.
Great.
And if you can find the containers for this first summer, I'll make sure they stay full of water. So we don't go run on a water line and have it be a failed project and we, you know, I'll make sure there's water there if we can find containers to put it in.
Right. All right. This is awesome. Well done. Okay. Moving forward, we turn to the third item on our administrative business list for consideration proclamation honoring Emmitsburg High School volunteer. Do you want me to read the proclamation? Okay, all right. So. Okay, this is in honor of longtime volunteer Joyce Bruchay. The proclamation, let it hereby be known on this occasion of this recognition of services, this sixth day of December 2022, the town of Emmitsburg hereby extends sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Joyce Bruchay for the services provided to the Emmitsburg High School as a teacher, librarian, and historian for 39 years. It is hoped that Ms. Bruchay will continue to be a presence and resource to the Emmitsburg community for many years to come. As presented by myself, Board President Timothy O'Donnell, and soon to be signed by Donald N. Briggs, Mayor. Great. Okay. Thank you. So now.
Can you take a vote, please?
Is there, yes. Is there a motion to accept the?
So moved.
I'd be honored to second that since Mrs. Bruchay was my third grade teacher. She caught me cheating on a spelling test. So yes, I would be honored with that.
Karma. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. The proclamation has been accepted. Thank you. Okay, we move forward now to our consent agenda. All right. First item is the reappointment of Diane Walbrecker to Board of Appeals with a term of December 15th, 2022 to December 15th, 2025. Board, a question for you all. I think we take these one at a time or together, depending on the board's will. Any preference?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay, so hearing none. So let's take a vote individually then. Okay, very good. Okay, so hearing none, so let's take a vote individually then. Okay, uh, all in favor of this consent agenda item, please say aye. Aye, anybody against? Anybody abstaining?
I'm abstaining for number two.
Oh, very good. Okay, so I for item one, is that correct?
Oh, yes.
Very good. Okay, nope, nope, we're good. Thank you. Okay, consent agenda, item number two, appointment of Jack Pollitt to the Parks and Recreation Committee with a term of December sixth, twenty twenty-two through December second, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, anybody against? Any abstentions? Okay, very good. So um, the board votes in favor, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Sweeney, Commissioner Ritz, Commissioner O'Donnell. There are no nays, uh, Commissioner Bowman-Pollitt abstains from this vote. Okay, consent agenda, item number three, appoint Valerie Turnquist as alternate to the Planning Commission with a term of December sixth, twenty twenty-two through December sixth, twenty twenty-seven. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? The motion carries five to zero, all commissioners voting. And we turn to consent agenda, item number four, reappoint Mark Walker to the Citizens Advisory Committee with a term of November seventh, twenty twenty-two through November seventh, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? No, the motion carries five to zero. Great, thank you. Now turn to staff, sorry, we now turn to the treasurer, pardon me, for uh the treasurer's report.
We had a beginning balance as of November first of nine million seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total deposits was three hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and four hundred and four dollars. Total just withdrawals were two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine, nine hundred and fifty dollars, which left us with the operating balance of nine million seventy-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And those top ten checks are there for everyone to see if you have any questions.
I, I actually have a question.
Yes, sir.
Cause that's just how I am. What is an auto racing valve? From Dennis Sales and Service?
If I recall correctly, it was a piece of equipment for the it's either the water plant or the sewer plant.
Auto racing, it just sounds.
Yeah, it's not, you'd think that would be under the East Park Automotive, but no, it's a, it was a piece of, um, it's a valve for either and I can't recall which one it was for. But it was part of the uh water treatment plant or the wastewater treatment plant, um, some improvements they were making.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for staff related to the treasurer's report? Okay, thank you. We move forward. Okay, so we turn to agenda item number one, and this is to hold a public hearing. Then consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, which would potentially increase water and sewer rates over a three-year period. All right, so at this time, I asked the board, is there a motion to for the moment, close the meeting and open a uh public hearing?
Mr. President, before we do so, may I jump in real quick? There was an item that we did skip over. Just for clarification, it was the, the planning report, but there's nothing to plan, there's, there's nothing to report, but I just wanted that to be put out there.
I'm very glad you pointed that out.
The planning commission did not meet in um, in November. And we were going to meet in December, but there was a delay with the applicant. I believe we have no new business as well, so our next scheduled meeting is January thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Just, just for transparency sake, want everybody to know that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, the last Monday of January.
January thirtieth, yes.
So now I turn to the board for a vote related to uh closing the current meeting and to allow for a public hearing related to twenty-two dash twelve uh ordinance, water and sewer rate increase.
I move that we close our town meeting at this moment to open a public hearing regarding ordinance twenty-two dash twelve.
Thank you.
Regarding the increase in water and sewer rates over a three-year period.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Motion was made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pollitt. Okay, so at this time, we close the meeting. Now we spontaneously opened the meeting for the public hearing related to ordinance twenty-two dash twelve related to water and sewer rate increases, and this is now started. Okay, so uh at this time, if you intend to give public comment, okay, you will be sworn in, so I'll ask you uh to please stand. Okay, so those of you who signed up and who still intend to speak, I'll ask you to please stand, raise your right hand.
Yes.
Okay. And uh, do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statements made by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, state, I do.
I do.
Thank you all. And we will. Very good. All right, so uh we turn to staff for our applicant presentation.
Okay, um, so what you have before you is ordinance twenty-two dash twelve. It not only contains the proposed uh rate changes for water and sewer, but there are a lot of areas that were cleaned up for dram- uh dramatical, grammatical changes and to actually reflect how we, we do proceed in the town as in regards to water and sewer and um I can do it two ways. I can address the water and sewer rate increases proposed, and then we can go through the other recommended changes in the ordinance um as opposed to trying to go page by page.
Before we go there, um, I feel it's important that we have a context as to why we're looking at this and where will that fit and which?
As soon as you tell me what you would like me to do with ordinance.
Okay, all right, so page by page.
Can I make a recommendation? I think that for the purposes of the public hearing, we should focus on the rates themselves. And then after the public hearing has closed, we can have discussion on the rates and at the same time, then we can talk about some of the changes that were made to the ordinance itself, again, which were made for the purposes to clarify and just sort of clean up most of what is already in existence.
Thank you.
Terrific, okay, thank you.
Okay, so brief history, um, this is our third meeting uh discussing the proposed increases to the water and sewer rates. Um, we had an initial meeting to go over the water and sewer rate study that was um completed by New Gen Strategies. And then we uh, we had a couple of recommendations for you. We had a um proposed three-year increase for water and then a recommended three percent increase for sewer at the second meet as well as a one-time uh jump in fee for water uh rates. And then you had a second meeting where you directed staff to proceed with the proposed uh three-year uh rate increase for water with the alternative rate design, which added the eight-inch line as well as the ten-inch, which we did not currently have uh the capability to bill for or to have its own rate, excuse me. So um, we proceeded with that when we uh Clark uh worked on the ad. So it was required public hearing. This uh notice was advertised in the Frederick News Post, the Emmitsburg News Journal, the Cottonton Banner, our website, as well as on Facebook, the proposed three-year rates. How did we get here to this point? We began having shortfalls in the reoccurring shortfalls in the water department uh for the last several years as uh was noted in our audit report and as well as the proposed budgets, uh yearly budgets. We have not had a ninety-day reserves for contingencies or un, unplanned expenses budgeted. Basically, what it's come down to is there's not enough fees and revenue to cover the cost of maintaining and improving the system. On average, expenses are increasing seven and a half percent a year. However, we've had no water increases in over fourteen years for all our users. The last increase was about eight years ago and it was for high-end users only. Um, in twenty twelve and twenty fifteen, the sewer rates were increased significantly. At that time, uh, the previous administration and myself, uh, there was no intentions to raise the water rates after that significant increase in sewer rates. Then we reached uh COVID nineteen and then the town uh, we didn't implement any late fees or shut-offs for a year. So the recommendation, the water rate study started in January of twenty twenty-two. Um, obviously, this is not anything that staff or the mayor or this contractor took lightly. We examined all different avenues. We took into consideration current grants that we do have for infrastructure projects such as our water lines and our water clarifier. We took into consideration the necessary improvements that the town is going to need, especially in the water uh infrastructure, which water lines, your North Seaton Water Line, your DePaul Street Water Line, your Waynesboro Water Line, your Wayne, uh, West Main Street Water Line. And then during the study, it came to our attention through a preliminary engineering report that um we were lacking fire flow capability to town. The contractor's recommendation, which has now been seconded by USDA, is to put in a six, sixteen-inch line down the mountain to address fire flow and abandon the current ten-inch line. This will have the town in a perfect situation for the next, barring any emergencies or disasters, that line will take care of this cap, town for the next twenty-five to fifty years. There's a potential need for a water treatment plant in the future. All these items were taken in consideration as we move forward uh in this rate study. The contractor took into consideration the grants that we do have and any potential grants or loans that we may incur in the future with these projects. Any future projects, we, you know, not knowing if you're going to get a grant or you're going to get a loan, we kind of split it fifty-fifty, grant fifty percent and a loan fifty percent. We took into consideration the American Rescue Plan Act monies that we did receive. Uh, the board designated the one point five million dollars to the water clarifier or the one million dollars to the clarifier and the remaining funds to the pump station due to um inflation, price increases, supply chain issues, that one point five million will solely go to the water clarifier. We did receive the second tranche of ARPA money in September, I believe. There was roughly another one point five, seven million dollars that I will bring to the board in January for designation. The designation will be also, we took into consideration will also be used to um offset uh monies need to be sent on the pump station as well as the future water line projects. In, and I know I had mentioned this to the board, per USDA in twenty twenty-one, they will not be able to offer the town any funding until our water rates are increased because of their analysis of our system that shows that we can't afford the required ma- maintenance and the basic costs of the current system as we, as we are today. They do recommend another rate study in five years. So the proposed rate, the, the pro, proposed rate increases um that the contractor offered and that were included in the ad, um, which you'll see in your agenda packet. For fiscal year twenty-three, um, the rates um go up about forty-four percent from their current rate for three quarter, for all the different size lines, and then they go up again in fiscal year twenty-four and again in fiscal year twenty-five. Your three-quarter inch user makes up about ninety-five percent of your users of the water system. And they use anywhere from ten thousand and under gallons. Again, that's ninety-five percent of the users. And um, when looking at the bill for somebody, for an average user of that amount, their bill actually only goes up fourteen percent. You'll see greater increases um in year one for your uh one inch, one and a half inch, two inch, and so on users. And then sewer, the recommendation for sewer was three percent each year beginning July, uh, January first to twenty-three, continuing on each fiscal year with a three percent increase for sewer. And that's basically to cover your maintenance and your costs of your sewer system. Cool, do you have anything to add?
One thing just to add is the um, the, the fourteen percent increase comes about because the sewer rate is higher than the water rate for the minimum and the water rate is the one that's getting increased more than the sewer, so that's how that, those numbers work out for those combined. Okay, any questions for staff related to what we've heard so far? No, okay, very good.
So all the single-family homes basically have the three-quarter inch line, correct?
That's correct.
And is there a reason there's a different rate for the different size lines? I mean, a gallon of water is a gallon of water. It depends what, it doesn't matter if it comes through a garden hose or comes through a ten-inch main.
It's the flow. It's the, it's the way, and, and it's hard for me to explain. I, I should have had Jared here. But the size of the line and the meter, um, it's the, it's the flow that comes through.
The way I understand it, when we asked about that, we saw that too, was that it can be more taxing on the system all at once, so. And I'm by no means an expert, but that's what they. Did, did we? Understand.
Okay, jump in. I, I wanted to tie into that.
So it takes more energy to push the water through a larger.
It's more taxing on the system. Unfortunately, the, the consultant is not on the line. He was supposed to be, he would be better able to answer that. This is, this, this is the way that all the water systems are set. It's based off the size of your line and the size of your meter um on how the calculations are done as far as the gallons that come through.
Did we ask other municipalities around us what, what they do to compensate for the, the strain on the system? Cause no one else has this. It, it, it's just.
Everybody has it broken out by meter size and line size. Every, every municipality that you pull there, there, this is.
Differ unless they put it in there, unless they work it into there. But if I, I looked at websites and there's nothing on there. Thurmont doesn't.
Thurmont doesn't list theirs.
They don't list it. Woodsboro doesn't list anything.
This is the guidelines from the American Water Association as well to have it broken out by the different size lines.
Well, the guidelines also, we restated its industry standard and guidelines to use that six thousand gallon per quarter, which I've been harping on for months.
So your minimum.
Other municipalities in Frederick County do not use that six thousand except for Frederick City. Other ones use um, they do straight up bill you per thousand, you know, for every thousand, you start at a base amount and then every thousand gallons used. I was really hoping, and I, I know I stress this a lot, and I'm going to say it again. I was really hoping that the individuals that performed this study would be able to take that into consideration when they offered us a solution and they did not.
So we did discuss it. Okay, so you know your minimums are decided to cover the basic costs of your system. Your insurances, your operational costs, your electric, your natural gas, your staffing, your loans, all the basic necessities that you need to provide day-to-day operations for your water and sewer system. That's what the minimum covers. The reason that you have a minimum is to say, I decide I'm going to go out of town for six months. I'm not going to use any water, so you're just not going to bill me any because I haven't used any water. So then you're at that loss of income or revenue to provide for the basic services for your sewer system. If you lower the minimums, you will have to raise the rates even higher for the rest of the people because this is an effort to get you where you need to be to pay for your current system. So we, you can certainly look at lowering the minimums. It's definitely not recommended by staff. It's not recommended by our contractor. But if you do that, then we have to go back to square one and look at these rates and you're going to end up charging everybody else more.
Do we have those numbers? You know, like, did anybody play with those numbers showing that if we did lower that six thousand to, let's say, four thousand, this is what it would be?
No, we did not. We didn't. It wasn't, it wasn't, it's not, it was, according to the contractor, it was just not, not a recommendation that they had. And, and I, I, I agree with them.
I mean, I know they're not on the phone. To me, when I brought it up that night, it, it was just like, it was just a, a quick statement. Well, that's just industry standard. To me, that was, well, we didn't really put much effort into looking at other scenarios for you. And that really frustrated me.
And it, it could have been in the way, and I don't have the RFP in front of us. It could have been the way the RFP was written and it wasn't even asked. It may not have been an ass on our end in the RFP and so it was not part of their contract.
But I asked about that in the scope. Was that part of the scope of the work? And it, and it was to look in, into that.
I don't, I don't remember. I don't, and I apologize. But that's, that's why you have minimums. That's why the minimum is said at six thousand. Some people, yes, are under six thousand. Some people, most people average between six and ten.
Mr. Ritz, I, I think they had said that they were basing their numbers moving forward on that industry standard when you brought that up. I thought that, that's what opened up the. Was that, that's what brought up the language of industry standard. Then we dug in on, but what does that mean? And their response and then staff response. I had thought was very similar to what we just heard. Basically. We're looking to have. The most basic needs of the cost of the system met without. Dramatically increasing everybody's rate. And if we were, and I mean, this is what I walked away with, that if we did go to a different lower minimum. That would have a rather significant bump up. And they, they talked about admittedly out of, you know. You know, off the top of their heads.
Yeah, it sounds good. And let's prove it. That's what I wanted.
I, I, I understand, but sometimes when we have a consultant who's. You know, our resource who comes recommended, there is a reliability that we have to accept. And of course, look, yeah, I, I see your dubiousness. I, I get that. And it's good to question things. But at the time, I think that it was addressed when you'd asked that.
Not sufficiently enough in my eyes. That's not directed at staff.
No, I, I understand, I understand.
Who performed the study for us.
Sure, sure, sure. So staff, we bring it back to you.
I do have one question. Wait, should we ask questions now or is that permissible?
Well, I think, yeah, it's, well, let's, let's go here. We'll refer to the attorney. We want to talk about rates. Is that correct? So.
The purpose of the public hearing is to determine whether the proposed rate increase is necessary and advisable. So staff has made their presentation. I would say if the commissioners want to continue to ask questions of staff. On what they just presented, that's fine. Once we've satisfied that piece of it, we open it up to public comment. And at that point, I would say staff should have the opportunity to. Present a rebuttal, if you will, of any points that were raised. And then the public hearing will be closed. You will vote on whether or not to accept the rate increases as proposed. And if the answer to that is yes, we can turn to the ordinance amendment. Which will implement those rate changes as well as some of the other cleanup language that we've talked about already.
So related to that scope.
My question is rate related. It's very simple, quick question. And, and is. Might be asked by the, someone from the public. I'll go ahead and ask this now. So after FY twenty five, it appears. There's a three percent increase each year.
Yes, that's correct.
Until we say.
Stop.
Stop. It'll just keep going until the board commissioner says, okay, that's enough.
And, and in reality, that's the way we should have been doing things for the last ten plus fifteen plus years. This will help you stay competitive in your rates. It is recommended to do another rate study and, and he said five years, I'd say in the next five to seven years to do another study. In the off chance that we're, we're high, you can always vote to lower them. If we're off again, then you'll have the option to raise them. But yes.
I was just confirming that it would just keep trucking along until.
Until the board decides they don't want to do that.
Thanks.
Mr. Ritz, is that satisfying? Okay, very good. All right. Commissioners, I turn to the rest of the board. Other questions related to. This piece before we turn to public comment? Okay. Sure, absolutely. Okay. Just one point I'll say, I, I won't say that staff will rebut what is put in front of them. They will respond. Because my hope is people are asking questions and we're not debating. We're just addressing information and dealing in facts.
I agree with that characterization.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, so I want to go in order of whom, who signed up first. Related to this item. So B. Ridnauer, I'll ask you to come forward. Process wise, just so you know, if you could just provide your name, identify that you're a town resident, you no longer need to give your home address. And then the floor is yours based on the timer on this topic.
All right. So my name is Blaine Ridnauer. Excuse me. I live on Mountain View Road. And I'm, I'm just, I just, I cannot believe a forty percent increase. At this time, you know, that's a lot of money for a lot of people. There's a lot of people that live in town. You know, elderly people, whatever, you know, and I don't, I'm not saying that we don't need an increase. I'm not saying that. I wish that my sewer bill was a lot more in line with my water bill because my sewer bill is three times as much as my water bill. Now, I could see an increase like you're talking about. If my, if my water bill is fifty two dollars and my sewer bill is sixty dollars. But it's not like that. My water bill is fifty two dollars and my sewer bill is a hundred and forty. Every quarter or whatever, you know, I live on Mountain View Road. I've been out there fifty three years of my life. Now eighteen years ago, I stood right in front of the board, not you guys, but. They owned a water line that went out that road. Okay. And at that time. They told the residents out there that they could no longer feasibly fix that line or keep repairing that line that already belonged to them. In order for them to get a water line out there, we had to pay for it, us residents, and I'm still paying for it. Forty two fifty every quarter. Every three months, I pay an extra forty two fifty on top of the water and the sewer bill now. Okay? Now, my thing is Waynesboro Pike, what you're talking about, are they going to have to pay for it because they're out of town just like myself? They should have to pay for the water line just like I did. Why aren't we discussing that kind of thing? We're still fixing pipes for people, but we're not. Mount Hugh Road, you got to pay for it, but I guess nobody else does. I, I don't, I don't understand. And I don't understand. I really don't. If we don't have the water or infrastructure now, why are we even considering building three to four hundred houses on the fraily property? Okay? We're buying water from Mount St. Mary's. It just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, that's not feasible. If we don't have the water to supply the people in this town now, why would we even? Consider putting another development in, you know, and, and I, I bought a house out there because I grew up out there. Mountain View Road won't be Mountain View Road anymore. If I got to look at four hundred homes, it's not going to be called Mountain View Road anymore. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, yeah, granted, it's been going too long. Okay, but I mean, I'm not pointing fingers, but. You know, some people have been up there quite a while. This left this go on. Cliff, you were on that committee back when they shoved that down our throats and they pretty much strong-armed people out there on my road. And it's, it's just, it's just not right, you know? I'm, I'm telling you, like, I, I just don't agree with it. You know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have an increase. I'm just saying that forty percent. And Mrs. Willis says an average is going to average out to fourteen percent. I would like to see those figures. But I just, I just, I'm just, you know, in my opinion, you know, it, it makes no sense to me. You know, to, to make me pay for every quarter now. I'll be paying for this thing twenty years of my life that I've lived out there. Why isn't somebody else going to have to pay for their water line? Why? They're not in town, you know? I'm not in town. I even went to the county and tried to get a well because I didn't want the water, but I can't. I can't do it because I have access to town water. You know what I'm saying? That's, that's, you know, I didn't, I, I knew this was coming down the road, you know? I'm telling you, it's not, I'm not blaming you guys. You know, old Doc Carr, he was on that committee. I mean, a lot of people that people know, you know? I'm just saying, I think they did us wrong at that time and I think they're trying to do us wrong again, you know? And, and that's how I stand on it, you know? That's, that's my opinion. My time's almost up. Thanks again, you know?
Mr. Ridnauer, thank you. Sorry about getting your name wrong earlier. Staff, we turn to you. One thing I know that we can address is like a simple thing, sort of low hanging fruit in the concern. Mount St. Mary's, the purchase of water from them is sort of, is a reserve for the town. We have to keep that line flowing if there were some catastrophic failure. In our system that we'd be able to draw from the mount. So that's why the town makes that purchase every month in order to. To, to keep that line open, quite literally to keep it functioning. But beyond that, I'll turn to staff and. Anything regarding the fourteen percent piece?
Yeah, so, so Cole just gave it to me. He worked up the numbers. So your three quarter meter, ten thousand gallon user, their, their bill for water. For their water and their sewer. This doesn't have anything to do with you get trash or the bait, all the extra bait or sewage maintenance. But just for water and sewer, their bill as of today is a hundred and sixty seven dollars and twenty cents. With the increase to water minimum, the fifty dollars and forty cents, the tier one at thirteen dollars and eighty four cents. It makes your water, your water portion sixty four dollars and twenty four cents. Currently it's forty four dollars and sixty cents. So that's about a twenty dollar difference. Sewer. Currently, a minimum user is a hundred and thirteen dollars. Your tier one is nine dollars and sixty cents. So your current sewer is about a hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty cents. The increase, the three percent increase is a hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty eight cents, which makes the total a hundred and ninety dollars and fifty two cents for a fourteen percent increase.
Mr. Ridnauer, I'll ask you to come up and just procedurally. You're good, you're good. Just, I know you're following up. Please address your question to me.
I apologize, Tim. I just had my bill here. I just, could you just show me maybe? Because I'm an over user. I, I'm just saying. On this last quarter, because I have a pool, my gallons was eleven thousand six hundred. My water bill was fifty one dollars and eighty cents, but my sewer bill was a hundred and thirty two twenty. Now you all know that that water is not going down the sewer. I mean, why can't we put a meter on the sewer? Just saying. I knew it come from you, Frank, you know? Yeah, that's all I'm getting at. That's, you know, I just, I'm, you know, I'm telling you, and then with my forty two fifty extra every quarter. You know, I'm paying two hundred and fifty eight dollars. Well, that tells me that I'm probably going to be paying three hundred and twenty five to three hundred and fifty every quarter.
If you want to email me and I have no problem if somebody wants to email me their, their, their current bill and we can try to figure it out to give you an idea.
I just, you know, I'm, look, I, I'm just, it's just, I don't, I don't think that the figures, I don't think the figures are right. I think we're going to be paying a lot more.
Those, those figures are correct for anybody that's under ten thousand at a three quarter meter.
I don't think I'm ever under ten thousand.
So with a pool, he's probably not under ten thousand. So, but he's just barely at eleven thousand over in the tier two.
And again, like, you know, the sewer, I just wish the sewer could, like, I mean, come on now, three times the amount? I mean, it's just insane to me.
Well, I, I questioned that also back when it started to happen before I was on the board and. I guess fortunately with that increase, our sewer plant and things are pretty much up to, up to standards and. Or we'd be in the same shape we are with the water.
But they're still going to increase the sewer.
Well, yeah, but if we don't, if we don't continue to look ahead. Then we're, we're going to keep kicking that can down the road too.
And I'm not, again, Frank, I, I understand it's twenty twenty two. I'm not, I just don't think that these rates. I mean, I'm just saying, I, I can't believe there's not more people in here.
Would, would you be happy? Are you happy if, if that fourteen percent rate or would, would you be okay with that if that's all it is? I mean, everybody's coming in here thinking it was going to be forty, fifty, a hundred and fifty percent increase this year. Right, so would you?
I mean.
So I mean, I can, Commissioner Davis, I mean, we have the spreadsheet all the way out. So you're basically your forty four percent. We're talking about your three quarter meter at ten thousand gallons and less. It's going to be on average fourteen percent. To, to go back to your sewer question, that was mandated by USDA when they put the new water treatment plant in. The previous administration had calculations for the sewer rate. A former board of commissioner member did their own rates. Calculations and increased it even more than the staff recommended, recommended. That's why we have the high sewer rates. We were hoping as well that the sewer rates would be able to go down a little bit. Unfortunately, that's not the way that it worked out. But as far as the, the percent increases. Your, your average ninety five percent of the people are three quarter inch, under ten thousand gallons. You're looking at a fourteen percent increase. Now, when you start going twelve, fifteen, twenty thousand gallons and. A larger line, then yes, you're going to see the forty four percent increase from year two to year three. You'll have a bit, a little bit bigger jump in year one, but then you'll level out to forty four percent after the third year. Then it goes, everybody goes to three percent. In water and sewer.
And again, on the sewer side, that sewer rate minimum is, starts at a higher amount than the water minimum. That higher rate is increased by the three percent. Whereas the lower rate is, is increased by the higher rate. That's how you come up with the fourteen.
Mr. Ridnauer, let me ask you to come up one more time. In fairness to those who want to speak also. Two minutes, is that okay?
I'm going, yeah, I won't even take two minutes. I just, I'm very concerned about Waynesboro Pike. I'm telling you, that's not right. If they get a line out there and they don't have to pay for it, how is that fair to us residents? It's already paid almost twenty years on a water line that was already out that road anyhow. That, that's all. I mean, that's, that's just, that's insane to me.
Nobody has said that's going to happen.
Okay.
And that is something that I'm working with the town attorney on and, and I don't know if she's ever briefed Clark on it, but that's, that's not, that's not anything where.
Okay, so the Waynesboro Pike line.
Is, is actually behind Wayne, West Main Street. So you're not talking Waynesboro Pike for, for years.
Okay.
So we'll have to work things out.
That line, what is our proposed plan for it to replace it? I'm assuming. Increase the size of it, is that accurate?
I don't have any of my notes in front of me for that one. When they told me West Main was more important than, they kind of went to the back burner.
So because of its critical condition?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So we don't have an answer for that regarding Waynesboro Pike. Okay, but.
But we do, we, we do understand there's a portion of Waynesboro Pike that is outside of town. And there are things that have to be taken into consideration because of that.
Okay.
And we've already had initial discussions with, with Leslie. So we are fully aware. I'm fully aware of the agreement for Mountain View Road.
We're empty on that answer. I can't give you anything in concrete related to that. But. Do we have a estimate is when we would see something related to the line leading to Waynesboro or leading beyond? Okay, five year window?
You're not going to pin me down.
I'm, I'm trying to get some.
I, I would like things and, and as you know, the pump station, we've been in plans for that for three years now. That's why I can't give you an estimate. I'd love to do it. And wave my magic wand and move forward quickly, but I.
I'm not asking. I'm not asking what is it going to take to get you in this water system today? Don't worry.
Right.
Just trying to, all right, very good. Okay, so we move to our next party who had signed up for this, Mr. Miller. Very good. Okay, thank you, sir.
So. So Cole, what it looks like to me, it's going to be about a, a twenty dollar increase a quarter for ninety five percent of the.
For the water side.
For the water side, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, that's, so I was close. I was pretty close.
Approximately, approximately twenty dollars.
A, a, approximately twenty dollars though, based upon what, what?
It's based upon the rates that are being looked at this evening, not.
And assuming how many gallons are used that quarter? Worth the ten thousand.
Ten thousand. So we took the, the, the ninety five percent of the users at the three quarter meter and ten thousand gallons and less. That your water bill is going to go from essentially forty four dollars and sixty cents to sixty four dollars and twenty four cents.
On the water.
On the water side. And your sewer would go from a hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty cents to a hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty eight cents.
So that's a grand total of what?
Twenty. Man, I'm terrible math. Twenty three.
I know it's apples and oranges too, but then we also got to take into consideration the MS four thing we threw in there too.
So, right, so you all, I, I also tackled on your bills. If you live in town, is, is trash, is tipping, is bay restoration fee? Is there a five maintenance fee? I can't.
I think so.
I don't even pay attention. Yes, so there are other things added to your bill, but we're just talking about the water and sewer rate increases and what's effect. So that's. That's the portion of that bill. Okay?
Twenty three dollars a quarter.
Yeah, and Blaine, to answer your question, what if I go over that? You'll pay twelve dollars and eleven cents for every thousand gallons extra. But that's, that's for a thousand gallons. You're not going to get trucked in for that, I tell you that.
Mr. Ridnauer, I'm going to ask you to come forward if you're going to use the microphone. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Can Mr. Ridnauer send me a copy of his bill and I will figure out for him what exactly his bill will be?
Mr. Ridnauer, would that be satisfactory to you?
That's fine.
Will that suffice? Okay.
That's fine.
All right.
I can't, I just can't do that all in my head.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll make a copy of it for me and, and then just shoot, I'll shoot you an email.
Mr. E. Ball, we're going to invite you up.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. So again, Mr. E. Ball, same thing, just identify yourself, you're a town resident and we'll move forward.
My name's Dennis E. Ball, reside at thirty nine Federal Avenue in Emmitsburg, Maryland.
I'm hearing different numbers than I came here, understanding. I understanding originally that the firm who an- and that analyzed the whole water and sewer rates originally said a hundred and fifty percent increase. Am I wrong or not? Can you use yes or no? Or then it came forty four percent, but not only for this year. Forty four percent again next year, forty four percent again the third, next year. Do you understand that, Blaine? So it's a hundred and thirty two percent, one up three years, not fourteen percent. That's my understanding. And I'm using your ad. This one's out of the Stockton banner. For three quarter inch line, projected water rates, three year increase. Currently, it's thirty five dollars. Physical year twenty twenty three, it's going to fifty forty. Twenty twenty four, it's going to seventy two sixty a quarter. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty five, it's going to one hundred and four dollars and fifty five cents per quarter. With a three percent increase every year after that, like Kathy said, Ms. Willetson. So where this fourteen percent's coming in, folks, you're, we're past that. When the people start seeing that they're gonna be charged a hundred and thirty two percent more in twenty twenty five, the crap is gonna hit the fan. Now, how did we get to the shape? It's not your fault. But I'd sooner, I'd sooner go back and pay, if it's normal to pay a three percent increase each year for the fourteen years, how many, how much is that? My math says fourteen years, we haven't paid a rate increase, times the three percent is forty two percent. So why don't we just go to the forty two percent and then start next, the year after next with a three percent raise? Think about it. And by the way, why do we have to hire an outside firm to come in here and, and come up with this plan? And it's so discombobulated, who can understand it? You gotta really look, cause really, the numbers, I'm telling you folks. Blaine didn't talk those numbers, did you, Blaine?
No, but I was asking about that usage, that's what I'm coming in at.
So I'm just saying, Tim, this stuff is not right. And then, and then we don't wanna talk about this tonight, but it's already been brought up. I'll be damned if three hundred homes are gonna be built out here. It's ridiculous. And nobody still wants to address this. Treasurers report, how much money we have in the bank? Nine million dollars. Nine million dollars, take two million dollars, transfer it, it's Emmitsburg's money, they're running the water business. Take two million dollars and put it in your account and your water, transfer. Take it to ref- referendum, next election, we need two thousand bucks in the water fund. Or is that unethical? Maybe I'm too ignorant to understand how, how does, how town government square. Why should I pay for a clarifier? I'm into you, I'm a resident using water. I'm not providing water to anyone. But you're gonna make me pay for, to provide myself water with these rates. It's just not right. I spoke my mind, I hope, I hope I wasn't too hard.
Thank you. I, I can answer a couple of those questions if you want.
Mr. Eball, thank you. Staff's gonna provide information, just, we'll see where it goes and we might see you come up again perhaps tonight.
So without getting into the treasurer's report too much, take off the top of the, the treasury reports, the nine million dollars. Three point, roughly three point two of that is the ARPA money that is earmarked for water and sewer. And then there's a big portion of that, that is also your general fund monies, and then if you need more particulars. But anyway, the top of that is three point two million, and it is earmarked for water and sewer. And that's for the various projects that we've already designated it for. And then the rest, the second tranche, the one point five will be brought to you in January.
Okay, and the, with the one point five million dollars that we're talking about, that we anticipate coming in January?
No, we are, we already have.
We know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But it will be brought to the board rather to
Designate it.
Determine how it will be spent, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Mm-hmm, and staff recommendation will be water and sewer infrastructure. Um, just like the first round. And then the, the water clarifiers, we've always talked about, it actually is save, is gonna save the town money during its production. Because we do utilize surface water from the lake and the LG Sonic helps clean algae. But when you get just as where the lake is today with the turbidity because of it being so low, your water clarifier helps essentially, for lack of a better word, clean your water, get things out of it, so that when it processes to the water treatment plant, it saves on your backwash and it saves on water loss. So it's part of the process.
Okay. So we move forward. All right, thank you, Steph. All right, uh, Mr. Howard, John Howard, please. No, I'm sorry, Marty Miller, pardon me.
Well, actually, Mr. President, Marty, Mr. Marty Miller is not here. Uh, he's, he could not, he does not have the capability of coming in. He reached out to me before the meeting, cannot make it this evening due to illness. He just was, um, he was concerned with the rates. They seem to be very drastic, spread out over all these years, and it, it feels that it's gonna be a hardship for himself and others. This increase, and I, I said that I would mention that at the meeting. So that's, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Howard, we'll invite you up at this time. Sorry, sir.
Good evening, I'm John Howard. I live on Waycross Court here in Emmitsburg. As someone else said, I'm just absolutely amazed the room isn't overflowing, uh, tonight with citizens, because this is a pretty serious issue. This shouldn't be left to just a few. A couple of things. Your chart that you put on advertised, it's unreadable. If anybody else could understand it, God bless them. I read it five or six times and I'm, I'm not an engineer, I don't claim to be, and I'm not an accountant. But just the simple fact that we hear people here saying, well, it's a forty four percent increase. No, it's a fourteen percent increase. That's a big difference. For the people in Emmitsburg, a fourteen percent increase is a big deal. This cannot be taken in isolation, this increase. Prices are going up every place. I don't have to tell everybody. You bought a gallon of milk today? Eggs, cass, you name it. And this is just something else that's gonna chip away whatever money is coming in per month or per week for our citizens. Eventually, we'll get to the point where they won't be able to afford it. And the hard decisions will be made. Uh, I saw an article in the Frederick Post today, not advertising for the Frederick Post. But the United Way talks about the fact that forty percent of people in Frederick County can't afford the basics. How many of those live in Emmitsburg? Just questions, I'm not gonna argue a dollar and cents, I can't do that. I'm not, I'm not a, that's smart. I mean, frankly, what it comes down to is are there any programs in place, or when we paid this consultant, were they asked to look into the fact that are there any, anything in place that will help these people that can't pay their water and sewer bills? Anything that exists currently, something that our state legislators or our county legislators can introduce and develop? Because it will happen. It's, it's gonna happen. Also, the impact on our businesses here in town. They probably are the larger consumers of water and users of the sewer system. So I would say their bills are gonna be a little bit higher than fourteen percent. Everything's going up. This is just something that, it's just another brick in the wall. That's on, just another brick in the wall. But, I mean, we've got people who who can't afford right now to feed their families without several trips to the food bank. And we cannot just look at this as, well, it's only fourteen percent. No, it's fourteen percent on top of ten percent, on top of eight percent. And pretty soon, there's no percents left. So I do not. Oh, the other, one other thing is I worked for the government for thirty seven years. I've never known a free fee to go back on a reevaluation after five years. It's not gonna happen. When it's reevaluated, it'll go up again, because costs will go up again. We all know that. It's nice to say, but I don't see it happening. I hope it does. I've, God, I hope it does. But I just felt the need, this first time I've ever spoken, in, in one of, one of the commissioners meetings, and felt pretty strongly about it. So I'm here in, in, uh, I wish there were more people here, because I think once people figure out what's going on, they'll wanna be here. So good luck, you, you'll need it. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we now turn to Rebecca Ness.
No, mine was not about water. I did not have water on there. I was about the earlier comments.
Okay, all right. Uh, Mr., no, Mr. Lindsay, nothing about this, very good. Okay, all right. So with that, we close public comments unless for this, okay, very good. All right, so Mr. Kip. Sure, we're gonna actually allow Mr. Hagan to come up in a moment, and quick question. Oh, okay. Okay, that's the question. So is it Ron Waters from Quality Tire? I'm sorry, okay. You, okay, for the water, is that correct? Cause you didn't write down your topic. That's what I'm trying to, okay, sorry, I just wanna make sure we're all on a level field. Mr. Miller, yes, and then Mr. Hagan, I'll let you finish. Is that sufficient? Okay, very good. So please come on up. And just again, and introduce yourself, identify a town resident or not, and then the floor.
My name's Lynn Miller, live on Mountain View Road.
Thank you.
Like I say, sitting here trying to take all this in, I just wanna make sure, are we going to get the answers? Is it, is it fourteen percent? Is it gonna be forty four percent? We need more clarification as to what is gonna happen. I think it'd also be nice before maybe the next meeting, what's the average price per household? You know, what's the average household pay? How many lines are being charged? You take that fourteen percent, that forty percent, how much money is coming in? What you're going to have after the increase and where that money's gonna be spent? You know, I mean, kind of break it down to where people from the town is gonna be able to know where it's going. That's all I want.
Okay, Mr. Miller, thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Miller, I'll follow up with you. I don't know if you're gonna spend the rest of the night here for the meeting, but I'll try to follow it with you. And we're gonna talk to staff in a moment after Mr. Hagan proceeds, and hopefully we can come up with some less abstract information, and it, I think some of it's gonna be our presentation, which will add clarity. And I think some of it will be our follow-up that will add clarity. So I don't think we're gonna get everything tonight that we're looking for necessarily. I know staff is gonna do their best, and they have to get us to this point for clarity's sake, but at the same time, you know, we're, we're gonna fine tune, for lack of a better term, how we're coming back with information. So I hope that answer is part of what you're looking for. Mr. Hagan, I'm gonna invite you up, please, uh, again, identify yourself, identify, I guess, in your circumstance, your role tonight.
Okay.
Please.
It's Kevin Hagan for the Emmitsburg Business Alliance. Just wanna say, I think as you've heard from the residential members, the business community in Emmitsburg is majority, small or single operator businesses, any increase to the bottom line cuts the viability of the business. And it's, all the supplies are rising, so we have to be cognizant of every little increase. We only have a handful of these larger businesses, five percent, Emmitsburg Glass, Federal Stone are our large users. They're also concerned, and I know Mr. Davis at one point suggested there could be an offset somewhere to get these increases. We would love to hear about if there could be some offset in property tax or some other way of how that offset can be concerned. While we've opened Panda Ware's box with the rates and going in here, we'd also like to see some changes in the details of the amendments here going down. I don't know if this is a time we wanna talk about that, and we will talk about that later.
So right now, we're gonna focus on rates.
Okay.
Right now, we're, thank you, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on rates, but once we move from this hearing piece to the discussion of the ordinance proposal, at that time, we'll move to that.
Okay. That'll work then.
We're okay.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so board, any further discussions regarding rates or rate related, uh, rate related items, Mr. Ritz?
Only that, it sounds to me that there's, there's, um, a volunteered action item from Ms. Willetts to, to provide some information to some, some residents this evening. So if we're voting on this tonight, though.
We might not have to necessarily, unless we are bound by some exterior piece, but we're not talking rates yet. I mean, we're talking rates right now, so we're in the hearing. So I think that's a discussion we would move to outside of the hearing.
Okay.
But.
I can wait to frame it then. Yeah, we're good.
Yes, sir.
I just get the feeling that I'm gonna need to be closer to the mic for the next little bit, so I'm just preemptively standing up.
So my, my only comment on not approving them and holding them off, and I'm not discouraging either way, is that means that you will have no rate increase in fiscal year twenty three. Because the next meeting would be in January, your next billing cycle is not until April first. Yeah, April first. So essentially, you're gonna only limit your fiscal year twenty three increases to help increase your, your revenue. So that will throw then all the future numbers off, but that's just my comment to that, because everything in this ordinance and everything leading up to this was for it to take effect January first. Then it would show up in your bill. Does it show up in your bill?
It'll be the March thirty first billing.
The March thirtieth bill. Okay, that's all.
Great, thank you. Okay, so any other questions related to rates or comments or concerns regarding rates for the hearing piece? No. Okay, so hearing none, we'll move forward. Is there a motion to close the hearing? Okay, is there a second for Commissioners Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. It's been seconded by Commissioner Davis. Okay, any further discussion before we close? Very good, hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing and resuming the town meeting, please say aye.
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 The motion carries five to zero. Okay, thank you. All right, um, so we have closed the public hearing related to ordinance twenty two dash twelve, water and sewer rate increases as the topic. Okay, so we now come back to agenda item number one. Ordinance, proposed ordinance. You got the proper name here. Twenty two dash twelve. So staff, we turn again to you.
Okay, so, um, in, in the ordinance is included the proposed water and sewer rate increases, uh, as well as the increase for three percent in, after fiscal year twenty five. So I'll just go through it. The majority of this, uh, as, as Clark mentioned, was to kind of clean up the language, clarify some of the part of the ordinance and to bring it in line with what is actually done in the town, at the town office. Page one, it just basically states, um, a superintendent to have general supervision of the water system. Right now, that's Jared Brantner. And he, his duty whenever an applicant presents a permit, uh, signed by the town planner, uh, that was just clarifications. Page two goes over the, um, water rates that we just discussed and letter A is your minimum for water rates, um, beginning July first, twenty twenty five. That would be when the three percent would go into effect and continue until the board would decide not to. Overage charges, number two. Numbers, uh, C on page three, uh, the board approved this several years ago, and I think it was under the previous town manager, uh, unusually excessive water use. Basically, if somebody has an unusually high water bill, sewer bill, most of the times it's because either a hose bib is leaking or a faulty toilet. They are allowed a reduction in their, a one-time reduction every three years. They are allowed a reduction in their, a one-time reduction every three years. Basically says that the average water usage for the property for that same quarter for the last three years will take into consideration. And such a reduction will only be granted once in the three-year period, and they have to establish a reason. That just cleaned up that section. Page four, the section was moved to the end of the ordinance. 13.04.40 on page five is just just a small change. Same thing with the bottom of that page. Page seven, notice of defective meter. Basically, if the property owner fails to notify the town of the defective meter, it shall be the duty of the superintendent to shut off the water for such premises. That was already in our ordinance. We just changed it to to notifying the town and not upon neglect or refusal to do so. Talks about page eight, application for and use of water outside the corporate limits. Um, any new contact connections to the town Emmitsburg's water system will be limited to properties that lie within the corporate limits of Emmitsburg unless other otherwise required by law. We struck out this refer, this refers to all requests, including hardship and state or federal mandates. Page nine talks about no water permit shall be issued until an application is presented and approved by the town planner who shall consult with the supervisor and director of Public Works. All permits for water tapage shall be signed by the town planner. Letter C. Clark, that was just rewording that section, correct? We didn't change anything.
Correct. The intention was not to change any substantive piece of that, just to make it more understandable and readable.
Page 10 was just clarifying positions related to the various sections. One thing that we we do do in town, it just wasn't in the code. A lot of time, not a lot of times, occasionally, we will have requests from homeowners or businesses to to get rid of a tap. But we didn't have anything in our code that permits increasing fixtures and increasing if they're in their fixtures would increase. I'm trying to think of an example. Um, when somebody's fixtures would increase that that.
Any change in use of a commercial property feasibly could result in there being more fixtures for the proposed use than there previously were. So this simply allows the town to take that into account and capture it.
Which we already do. Um, if there's a change in use, we require a plumber to submit the current fixture count. And then a proposed fixture count to see if there's any increase or decrease in usage. And then page 15, just clarifying that the mayor and commissioner's old point of superintendent to have general supervision over the sewer system. 16, just some minor changes. Page 17 is the sewer rates that we discussed and the 3% increase both page 17. Let me ask. Should this read, should this read January? Yeah, it should be.
That's the 3%.
For sewer.
Right, but I mean, you're already.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're good. Yep, yep, yep. Page 17, just as the correlates with the ad for the sewer rates, same thing with page 18. Again, the collection of charges where it was moved to the ends of the ordinance. Anything not in bold and and all capitalized is currently in the code and has already been approved by the board of commissioners. Just a a quick reminder on how how the ordinance is written. Page 23, chapter 13.09, water and sewer system collection. It basically put the collection of charges for both water and sewer under the same section. I don't believe that we made any changes to that section. It was just copied from the original page. Oh, shoot. Page. Page.
Four.
Page four and five. So what's was was already in the code was just moved to a new section, 130910. It's the same language, it's the same way that we collect water and sewer.
It also tracks the state code on water sewer collection as well, for what it's worth.
That's the changes to the ordinance.
Questions, your comments for staff related to the postchanges?
I don't see anything in here on late bills or anything. I had a couple people call and say they paid their bill on the last day and put it into the box downstairs or at the other town office. And they still got charged a late fee because it said, they said it didn't have it in the box by four o'clock on that day. And I don't see that anyway.
On the date that it, on the day that's due. So so let's just say, so water bills are due on the 5th. We come in at 8 o'clock on the 6th and check the drop boxes, both of them. Um, and anything that is in the drop box when we come into work, we say 8 o'clock. It's more like 8:30, 9 o'clock. Anything that's in that box is considered on time.
Okay, because we did have a couple people that said they paid on the day and were told that they were after 4 o'clock, so they got charged a late fee.
That could possibly have been shut offs, shut off the day before shut off.
It was a, it was a late bill.
Okay.
Just need to, something we gotta look.
That process is on page 24. Yes, it's a lot. I understand.
Mr. Sweeney, any comments or questions? Ms. Bowman-Pallett? Mr. Ritz?
No, not on the changes to the ordinance. I was, um, okay, my inquiry earlier was due to
The numbers.
Yeah, the the numbers. And if we're, if we're presenting this information, I know that that's, that's a nice gesture for these individuals that are questioning it, but we could technically be voting on this tonight. And if passed, then it's it is what it is. And it's like, it's nice info for him to have, but.
I did actually entertain a few phone calls of people that did ask
Okay.
what their bill wouldn't be like. And and we did, and I know Serena talked to a couple as well. And we worked through their bill with them and gave them what it would be.
Okay.
So I did entertain, we did have some calls.
Well, thank you. That's all I have right now. I just, I don't know what route we're going tonight.
So the the my intent is just, we're talking about, again, low hanging fruit, any language issues, concerns about procedures and policy before we get to rate.
No, I mean, everything made sense. I I could understand the changes and, you know. No, that part.
So staff, I'm turning to page one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I'm turning to page one of 25. And I'm looking at the piece where a superintendent general supervision over the water system, understood. It shall be the superintendent's duty whenever an applicant presents him, presents a permit, sorry. Presents a permit signed by the town planner to make or cause, I'm gonna stop it there. In the event we don't have a planner on hand or we don't have a superintendent, do we want to have language in here that might allow the town manager to have a role in this? So we're we're covering the base of, either someone might not be available or someone is not on staff at that. We don't have that staff position filled.
Well, I would think that any position that's left open, the town manager is responsible for. That could be with anything. I mean, truly, right? Who's doing it now?
It is truly, that is absolutely 100% the truth. I think if you change it here, you're gonna have to change it everywhere in the code. It's just, it falls under the town manager's, town manager's job description anyway.
Okay.
Chapter two, I believe.
So we don't need to worry about that.
I I agree that that eventuality is covered elsewhere in the code.
Concern satisfied. All right, now we turn to the hard part and I'll start, uh, staff, I'll go ahead.
Before we move on from the more procedural aspects of the ordinance, I believe that we deferred a public comment on that piece of it during the public hearing. So maybe perhaps we should let.
Let me, let me get staff lined up and then we'll move there.
Sure.
Mr. Hagan, despite Mr. Ritz not trusting my judgment, and he, and he should, um, we'll get you, I promise you. All right, staff, I'm going to turn to you. So the question that I've heard tonight most consistently is, what is the rate change going to be based on the folks who are attending tonight? And the clarification piece, I think we're going to come to at a point tonight, is going to ask for that clarification. So I want to advise you now, so if calculations can be, you know, put in place so we can have that in hand, we'll be okay for that. Because I I think that's one of the pieces the board will be driving at. Okay, now, Mr. Hagan, we turn to you. Thank you, sir.
Well, we actually did Mr. Ridenhour's calculation, and his is actually a 12.61% for an overall increase of $23.21.
On a quarterly basis?
Quarterly.
And that's just the water and sewer portion.
And that's the first, that's the first increase. Right.
Correct.
It should roughly be a Right.
Right.
Well, these are the rates. The rates are very, I mean, what's your rates or what you are looking at are the rates? So there's no question about what the rates are. The
So let me hold on for a second, please. Please continue.
I was to let Clark continue.
I I I just wanted to make it a general point that at this point, the public hearing is closed. And so this, this back and forth
True.
between, I I I understand the the why we're trying to to do this. I I truly do. But just from a procedural perspective.
So procedurally, I'll hit the reminder. Conversation, questions, inquiries in the meeting, please direct them through myself and through the board. We'll carry them to staff. You can look at me and ask the question to staff almost directly if that's not an issue. It's part of our process. So.
Commissioner Donald, can you turn your microphone on?
It's right here.
Right.
Or 44%, I just get the rate.
Sure, thank you.
It's in your view. What you're talking about right now, it's going from $50.40, which that was changed, and I can understand that's for the first year. The next year, 72.60 to the mayor is 40 couple percent.
Okay, so Mr. Eball, let me ask you this, if if you allow it. Let me have, uh, Mr. Hagan come forward. He's got his remarks he wants to share regarding this. We'll go in that direction with staff so we have clarity on the percentages. Is that staff, will we be prepared for that? Is that sufficient? Okay, all right. Mr. Eball, so that's the, that's the way we're moving. No, 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 we're good. We're good. We're good. We're good. No, we're good. We we have to have this. Mr. Hagan, please come forward to the dais and introduce yourself one more time and move to where we need to go.
Okay, it's Kevin Hagan.
Yes.
Emmitsburg Business Alliance. Um, now that we're in the details, what we'd like to recommend, if you go to page 29 and go down to section C. We're concerned because of COVID using that line the last three years, because COVID is going to be under reporting for any of our businesses or restaurants that may have a problem or a leak. We'd like to see it changed to five years until fiscal year 2025. And if needed, we could put some commercial language in it that it only applies to commercial entities. But for the last three years since we haven't been doing business because of COVID, we're going to get hit. So we'd like to see it over the last five years to adjust when business was normal. And then change it back till in fiscal year 2025. So we'd like to see that alternate language for the last five years until fiscal year 2025. Then it will be a three-year average from that point forward.
Conclude your remarks?
That's all I need.
Very good. Okay, thank you, sir. So staff, we turn to you. We understand that we have the rates set.
So a quick clarification is, and and Cole just showed me, so on the water side, from going from $35 to $50.40 or for $50 to 40 to 72.60 is in fact a 44% increase. But then when you combine it with your sewer increase of 3%, your overall bill, your combined water and sewer bill, because that's what we're talking about, is a 14% increase for 95% of the people that are three-quarter inch meter using 10,000 gallons and less. That's how you get to the 14% overall. It is right. We have done the calculations.
Okay, so. So Mr. Eball, Mr. Eball, I'll hold on for a second. We're, we're going to try to put it together, but let's so, Mr. Table, yes, sir, you wanted to add.
The 14% comes from the combination of the water and sewer together.
Correct.
Okay, so.
That's what most people are concerned about, the overall bill, how much it gets off.
Okay, so the overall bill change anticipated for 95% of the user users with the quarter inch line.
Three quarters.
Sorry, three-quarter inch line, that increase combining water and sewer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, they would, they would anticipate a 14% increase on their water and sewer payments in their one-time bill. And sorry, in their one-time quarterly bill.
Correct.
Do I have that accurately? Okay. Okay.
Again, that's for 10,000 gallons and less.
10, 10 and fewer. Okay, very good. Okay, sir. Did you want to chime in? I thought you had something you wanted to add. Okay, all right, pretty good.
I was just gonna make another comment about comments from the floor, but I think we're good.
Okay, terrific. All right. So we've turned to the board.
I'll go.
Mr. Sweeney.
Since I've been here longest. I've been here 23 years. We have not raised the water and sewer, as as everyone knows, the water hardly at all, because we have 70% poverty, and I did not want to raise any of the stuff while I was on the board, which we did not do. So, um, that's put us in this predicament that we have now. I'll take the blame for that, for not raising everybody's rates like we should have did quarterly way back when I came in 23 years ago. Because I didn't want to put a hardship on any of the families that were here already. So, um, that's why, and to pay for the maintenance and stuff for the water and the sewer that's, we do have now. The new water and the new sewer plants and to upkeep on all the maintenance and to keep on for the future, which we're planning for. We have to upgrade and we and we do our charges. So, um, I'm sorry, I did not increase it back then, 23 years ago. Every 3%, but we didn't have the information we do now. So that's my two cents. Who's next? We, if we don't do it, we're going to end up worse than we are now.
My my two cents on it now is, I think everybody knows how I still feel about that 6,000 gallon thing. And I still feel, I I understand Commissioner Sweeney saying, you know, we got ourselves in a bind. I would have been more comfortable in a slight increase for the following fiscal year. And then reevaluate it, maybe a smaller increase after that, rather than you know, a huge jump in water. Next year, a huge jump in water after that, a huge jump in water after that, and then leveling out the 3%. I think it'd have been a better pill to swallow. This is gonna cause some hardship, and I know we're talking about this bottom line 14%. But all in all, it's it's going to be we're just looking at a few individuals tonight, too. I know for myself, uh, over the summertime, you know, you it your, your usage does increase. It's not going to be very consistent. Uh, it's gonna be jumping around a lot. I I just I know we have to look down the road. Uh, things were avoided. I just think that the way we're going about it. We could have looked at other options even outside of a consultant. And that's just, that's just how I feel. I'm not too overly comfortable with what we're looking at potentially voting on tonight as the whole package. Rate wise.
So the, the total bill that we're going to be going up is ninety two dollars.
Excuse me?
Is it ninety two dollars, Cole, for a year, ninety two dollars a year? For the water. And it's. What ninety two dollars for this? It's twenty three dollars times four. It's ninety two dollars. Is that what it is? Ninety two dollars a year, a whole year and.
The rates are posted, it would be an increase of January first of thousand point three. Those rates would be the first two quarters and then. So for the first two quarters, it would be that twenty three.
And then what goes to the, that's not what the sewer, the sewers, what, three dollars more? The three percent for the sewer?
When it, when it goes to the next fiscal year, it would be increased.
And, and here's an example. I, I know, I know a lady that lives in Northgate. She's by herself. She uses actually under six thousand gallons a quarter, but she takes, she pays the six thousand a quarter. So she's right now accustomed to paying thirty five dollars. For water. And in two years from now, she's going to be paying about a hundred five. A quarter. That's. Over four hundred dollars additional a year. So. There is going to be. It's going to be very hard for some folks. Yes, sewer might be just going up slightly, but that, that, that's a large jump for what in water. We're all looking at the heavy users, but when you look at the light users too, I think they're. It's, it's going to be pretty tough.
I'd, I'd like to see us stretch this out further and make the increase less per year. We're trying to fix a twenty year problem here in three years. And it's going to beat people up. Plus, the other thing I would like to do, I'd like to see us try to tighten our belts on our general budget. And be able to decrease that to help offset some of this others. I know we can't do much, but we can probably do something. I mean, we've been living pretty well here with new equipment and things like that. And uh, I, I think we can, we just have to tighten up a little bit. And uh, you know, I see we get, we get all these grants, but I just went through and saw all the matching grants. There were a couple hundred thousand dollars of matches that we had to, had to uh, to put out or had the potential to put out. So maybe we've got to put a little bit of a moratorium on that. And concentrate on our infrastructure for the next couple of years. I know it's hard to swallow, but nobody said this was going to be easy. We're here and we can't throw it all back to the people. We have to do something too. So I, I, I think that's something that we, I, I hope we can take a look at if that makes any sense to anybody.
Question, any thoughts?
Um, Commissioner Davis, um, on that topic. Do you have more specifics on what you think that might look like? Or is that something that we would?
No, something I have to, would have to ask Cole to, to try and, and Kathy to try to, to work up for us, but. You know, our, our income has, even though we haven't raised taxes, our income has increased because of the property value that's went up. So while it looks like we didn't increase taxes, we're, we're still taking in more money than, than we have in previous years. Except for the one year that we did drop back and we probably shouldn't have done that one, but. But with, with this, I'm not sure. I'd, I'd have to ask staff to get us those numbers. And I'm not sure what it can be. I'm not sure what we need to balance our budget and, and to have a, a little bit of safety stuff in there to continue to take care of streets and things like that. But you know, some of the stuff that we're, I think we just got to try to prioritize.
Ms. Willett, am I allowed to ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Ms. Willett, um. I know you had said if for some reason we postpone or take a look at, and, and it does not go into effect in January. That it's going to throw off the. The long term plan for, you know, paying off what we need to pay off. Would it cause us to be in a deficit at any? Would we have to adhere to this schedule starting in January in order not to be in a deficit?
So, so if you recall, the, the initial scenarios that were presented to the board was the. I think it was a hundred and fifty percent increase. Your first fiscal year would get you to where you need to be with your ninety day. Uh, emergency fund for contingencies and unforeseeable, you know, water main breaks or things like that. So with this three year proposal, you will not reach your ninety day. Fund. Until the end of that three years. So any delay in implementing the fund will just extend longer till you get to that ninety days. With that, with understanding that that, that's going to be the outcome. You change the rates, you change the percentage, you. Any adjustments to that will then just extend that point to where you get to the ninety days. And being able to fund these and I, I forget who made the point. We are fortunate to get grants. We are fortunate to get funding, but funding is not guaranteed. And it's going to continue to get more competitive that, you know, I hope we never see the day where we're not eligible for grants, where we don't get them. We need to be able to be in a position, whether it's in ninety days, three years, five years. We need to be in a position to be able to pay for some of these projects out of pocket. Does that answer?
It does.
Okay.
And um, I know that you had mentioned that part of the reason why we don't qualify for additional assistance is because we haven't raised the rates. Is there? Um. What does that entail?
It's, so that, that stemmed from a, from um, our consultant or the person that we, we get all our funding from with USDA. Um, she was instrumental in getting our pump station funding and um, the water treat or wastewater treatment funding. I had reached out to her about getting funding for the water clarifier and part of their process is to review. Our budget, our audit, our user rates to see if we're eligible for grant funding or for loan funding. And at our current rates, that conversation was probably about two years ago now. She said at that point, we cannot give you any funding because you cannot afford. Another loan, you can't afford, you know, your, your budget's so far off that. Just basic maintenance is not being covered by your budget until you make steps to raise your rates. We can't provide you funding. They needed to see that we were making headway towards it.
So could that be something less drastic and still show them that we're doing our due diligence?
So that would be, I, I would defer to them. That would have to be their calculations and to see if it, in their eyes, it met whatever standards they require. So for example, MDE though, just um, we did submit the DePaul Street Water Line and the North Seaton Water Lines, MDE for funding. As of right now, they did give us funding. It's loans right now. Um, they make the determination if there's going to be any grant monies also in January or February. Loan, loans will just continue to tax the system.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this is just staff's job to give you all the information. It's, you guys have the hard decisions to make.
I guess um, turning to the commissioners, my, my concern is I do feel like we've kind of dug ourselves a hole. And we do need to take action of some kind as far as what that looks like. I don't know.
Well, I think if we put a plan in place and they see that we're going to continue this until we do get called up. Here again, that's common sense. So maybe that wouldn't happen, but you, you would hope that they would. Say, okay, you've got a plan in place and you're going to continue to do this and we're going to hold you to that plan. And if we had to extend it out further. Again, I just don't think it's, right now is not the right time to be, be banging on our residents so hard. I mean, it's going to, it's going to affect everybody, even if you're a renter. Because if I got to put my water, my, my water rate is going to go up on my rentals, I'm going to have to put my rent up. So and, and, and that, you know, you just have to do it. And that's, that's for everybody. Uh, the businesses, if theirs goes up, they're going to put their prices up.
Not, not at this point.
So it's.
Gosh, unfortunately, sorry.
So, so what if we, you know, what if we went out? And did this over a, a six year period or an eight year period? Uh, no, it's not what we want, but we didn't want to be in this situation.
My only comment was then you still be at the eight year mark, you'll be back probably. Not in this bad shape, but you'll still be behind because as, as inflation continues, you know, nobody anticipated that we'd be at what, eight and a half percent inflation today? Um, if, if that trend continues in eight years from now, you know, hopefully things change. We're going to continue to be that far behind. Again, this is, these are decisions you guys have to make. It's just my job to give you the information and Cole's job. Um, but you're still going to be behind the, the eight ball and never get to your ninety days. To be able to pay for things that need to be paid for. I don't, I mean, that's, that's just my, 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 just the information. I mean, there's nothing to say that you still can't do it. Just realize where you'll still be.
Well, let's. Uh, sir, I, I, I have to ask you to stop. I'm sorry. It's just the format of the meeting. I'm, it's not personal. It's just format. I'm sorry. You, Mr. Davis, I would assume from what I've heard. The issue that, of concern is the visibility of the numbers. And I turn to staff and. Steph, my understanding is you've put forward the numbers. Is that correct?
So we, we currently have the numbers through. Twenty twenty seven. So that's. Five years fiscal year twenty seven. So that would be um. July one of twenty twenty six. So about four and a half years projected out. For people to see, are you talking about just what the rates would be for those years? Is that what you're asking?
I'm more going on the visibility for public access.
Yeah, it's been advertised in the papers and on our website and Facebook and agenda packets and.
Okay. So here's where I'm coming from. I have no wisdom that's going to solve this problem. I'm just going to go to a couple of reference points in my thinking. As a municipal leader, we're asked to make hard decisions and, and here we are with among the hardest that I've seen. In a great while. And I look at other municipalities and I see how they're functioning and not functioning and providing services to the community. Our responsibility is to create uh, the environment where we have a safe and viable community. We are here to protect those things as stewards of those things. Um, our community is based on relationships. Most of you guys know me, you can call me, you can make fun of me. I know you. It's okay. I mean, it's just, we, we have that. Uh, exchange and it's true. I think for virtually everybody on the board, we all have these relationships in town. Uh, but the hard thing that we're facing, the reality is we're facing is this can has been kicked down the road again and again and again. And the situation is not improving. And then in my mind, I go to Jackson, Mississippi, which has had the unfortunate difficulty of not being able to provide water to its community whatsoever. The infrastructure became so untenable because the funding wasn't there because the community didn't have the funding for it. And there are other, there are other mitigating factors. I don't know. And I turned to staff on this one. If we have any system that is in crisis at this time. Other than in my mind, my main concern is the water line coming from the mountain to the town. And the other piece was the safety piece of the capacity to provide appropriate water. If there were a demand on it, I think that, what was there? The USDA line was about the water for fire service.
So, so, so as part of the preliminary engineering report that USDA requires. Um, when you do um. Water system, any water systems. So they take, they want you to take a look at your entire. The preliminary engineering report requires you to take a look at your whole system. So um, the contractor that, that was approved. That did the preliminary engineering report, looked at our whole water system and found, and through all of that, the fire flow. Uh, was lacking in town and their recommendation, they recommended a ten inch line to go next to the ten inch line that we currently have. So you would be maintaining two lines. A twelve inch that would be running parallel to the ten inch line. You'd still require both lines. USDA's recommendation um, would be. The sixteen inch line down the mountain, abandon your, your ancient fifty plus year old line coming down the mountain and put in a new line. That you know is brand new, that. Knock on wood barring any natural disaster, you're not going to have to worry about for twenty five, thirty years. And that's where that came from. That is, that is an urgent piece. Um, of the puzzle. Um, as everybody in this town can remember, we did have a discolored water. Prevailing issue. Was at the end of twenty nineteen, I believe, that we have done leaps and bounds with um. Making improvements at the basic level that we can make at, at the staff level. Part of that is, is these ductile iron lines.
The old.
And that's, that's your North Seaton line, that's your DePaul street line that are in very bad condition that have a lot of tuberculosis. And so in my eyes and staff eyes, that too is an urgent repair. Um, that, that is a necessity. Um, the West Main Street line, I, I would have to go back through and read from um, the staff, what. The reason behind that was, but that was Dan, Dan Thistle's recommendation that that one needed to be done as well. Um, before you tonight is also the three years sewer relining bid. Once we complete this three years, we will have done all the sewer lines that need to be done in town. Um, which is a huge accomplishment that they're seeing um, great progress at the pump station and the wastewater treatment plant.
That's great.
So.
So coming back.
I don't know where I was going with that.
Sure. No, no, just that you, you gave us the facts and it's appreciated about what's critical and what's imminent in, in failure. And the, the one piece that came to me was in talking to staff earlier. Um, about a month ago was the last time we had a number for water coming down the mountain. The replacement from, I think the number was generated three years ago or older. It's a nine million dollar expense to replace that water line. And I can only imagine now that's jumped because of the cost of labor and the cost of everything else going up, but coming full circle on it. We're in a difficult situation. We truly are. And we're not trying to break anybody. And I know our reality is we're being hard pressed from all sides fiscally. I mean, we live that, all of us. Okay, I don't think there's anybody in this room who's so comfortable that they're not feeling that squeeze. The other piece to the puzzle is we do have to take action. We can't just say no to these things. I think everyone seems to agree that action is necessary. Okay, the question is, how much can we afford now? But how do we also stage it in the future? So we're telling future us, we're going to have to pay for this expense. Because the reality is the bill will come due on what's necessary to change. And boards that preceded us, I guarantee you, having seen the dynamics and having read some of the minutes. They faced very similar circumstances where we're staring friends in the face and saying, we're going to be spending your money on something that you don't want to have your money spent upon. And that's a difficult thing. And then I'm not saying pity party, yay, you know, bored. I'm just saying. We have to face this reality collectively as a community that it is going to cost something of us to maintain the, the, the privilege of living here. So um, we, we, we can't just dismiss this out of hand. I don't think anyone's saying that, but I get worried about that. Because you know, if we trim and we trim and we trim, um, we're not going to be able to meet our need for future us, us in the short term. Um, you know, yet alone those who follow. And, and that's my main concern. So uh, forgive me for indulging too much in talking. That's kind of where I'm coming from, just in, in the hypothetical. The money piece, Commissioner Davis, I like what you're suggesting about the approach of maybe slowing down the rate of increase in the short term. But I think we have to acknowledge as a board, that at some point in time, uh, we're going to have to press hard on our community. And we'd love to say we can predict a future time of better economics, but nobody has that crystal ball. So if, if we can make it work in the short term where we do scale back a hair, um, I think in the long run. You know, we're, we're still going to be very hard pressed by this expense. Um, you know, whether we're satisfied with the report or whether we just like, you know. Um, you know, whether we're satisfied with the report or whether we just like, you know, who investigated this or where the information is coming from. Um, the reality is the reality where where it sounds like we're dealing with like deficit spending. And that's something we are desperately trying to not have happen. Uh, that that kills the viability of a community. So these are my concerns at the moment. So with that, I'll be quiet. So, Board, I bring it to you. Are we ready for a motion on this? Or do we want to discuss this more? I don't know.
I would like to discuss.
Sure, please.
I. I do think an increase is needed. There's no way around that. I think we all agree that something needs to happen. Um, my concern is some of what's been brought up about. Wh- what resources are out there that we could offer for people who might need assistance, number one? Number two, um. Pressing the person for, okay, what do we need to do to qualify for? To receive funds? What does that look like? Um, does that mean as long as we're showing increases that maybe at a certain point? Or do we have to go the full hundred and fifty? Well, whatever the percentage may be to be to qualify. For those funds. It would be interesting to know where does help come in, you know, rather than. We don't know that right now. I don't know that right now. And then I don't know if there's a way, honestly, for bill clarification. To do example bills, like if your bill is currently this, this is, I mean, it is, it it can be confusing. I agree. So how do we make that a little bit clearer for people to digest and really understand? Because in some cases, it it may not be as large as they're anticipating. In some cases, it may be. So is there a way that we can? I I don't even want to say like table it until. Um, January until we can get clarification on some of these items? Or is there a happy medium in between? I'm just throwing it out there.
So so to answer the assistance piece, um, the state of Maryland does offer low income, uh, water assistance. And I know for a fact, we suspect there that they actually reached out to five people. Uh, this billing cycle to help them with their bills. Um, that's a state funded program. I don't know how long it's going to last. As long as they have their funding, they said they're going to continue to offer it. Um, and there is other organizations in town that have helped people with their water bills. Um, on our website currently is an explanation how to read your water bill and how to, how to, how to figure it out. Um, your current water bill. There's no reason we couldn't take an average and do that. I can't, you know, I can't put everybody's up there.
No.
But, um.
I'm thinking like, if you just in some of the main jump categories to be able to look at, especially if someone goes over. Over the ten thousand gallons. Just so that you can kind of say, oh, I fall in between here and here. So I'm probably going to be in there if if it's something that is a challenge for them to.
Right.
Do. I mean. I'm just bringing this up for discussion. I really, I'm.
Any hypotheticals?
Mr. Davis. What if we, what if we did like ten percent for ten years?
As a flat rate?
As as the increase.
But ten percent for all users, I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, pretty much, or.
Sure. No, I understand what you're saying.
You know. We're, so we're going to have people trying to pay their water bill and not be able to buy food or not have. Heating fuel.
Right.
I I I I think to, uh. You know, I know some people ask, what are we going to do with it? I don't think that's hard to answer. We have water lines that need to be replaced. We have have equipment at the, uh, at the treat, water treatment plants that needs to be done. We need to put another water treatment plan in for the wells that we have here in town. So there's all kinds of things. That that we can spend the money on. It's not like we're trying to build a a nest egg of money, so. I don't know. My my phone had been ringing off the hook the last three days and it's just, you know, from from business people and. People are concerned that they're not going to be able to pay the bill. What are you going to do if I can't pay the bill? Now, so I.
Would it be helpful to have staff? Take inquiries about bills and calculate the rate based on what's being proposed? And could we ask staff to? Consider investigating a flat rate? No, if you're ten percent increase per year, is that what you're saying?
Well, to try to get to that hundred and fifty percent that we need to do, I I know it's not, it's not what we want to do. I know we want to get there quick and and get out. But it took us twenty years to get here and now we're trying to get out in three years.
Right, right.
No, and I I and I understand, nobody, I don't, I don't want to be sitting here right now. This this affects me as well. But again, you do ten percent for ten years, you're never going to get where you need to be. Just now, it's never going to happen.
Never say never. Never is a long time. You know, we we need to go to our state senators. We need to, we are able to get a million dollars. Uh, Senator Huff got us a million dollars for, um, the clarifier and things like that. We need to go let these people know we need help. There's money out there. We need to go to our our state, state, uh, delegates and say, hey, we need help.
And that's, you as elected officials need to be doing that on a constant basis.
Well, we do. We need to, we need to be in their ear. We need to 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 know. We need to go to the county and say, we need help. Not that the county has been over responsive over the last several years to helping people. Um, but we need to let them know. Say, hey, we we need help. So we we. We just can't throw it all on our people. It's just, it's it's impossible to do. It's, we're going to hurt a lot of people.
That's what we've been going through the last twenty three years. We didn't want to hurt the people.
Well, it's almost.
These people, we gotta go, I live, we all live in town.
But it's almost like when you you go to rent an apartment and you you're, you're getting five hundred dollars of, uh, you know, a month rent. And, uh, and I remember this. I remember this very well, you know, and they come and say, hey, we're going to raise your rent twenty five dollars. How are we going to pay that? What are we going to do? How are we going to pay that? Well, we ended up paying it. We ended up making it. And if you do a little bit at a time to. You know, and we go out and try to get other funding sources, we we keep working on these grants. And we we trim our budgets here a little bit to try to lower people's property taxes and and do a whole bunch of little things. I think we can make it. Just to say we'll we'll never catch up. Unless we do this, um, I'm not buying it.
And I, but for ten percent for ten years, you're not going to catch up. But I I and then I said that's it's my information to give you or my responsibility to give you the information. You guys make the vote and make the decisions.
I understand. I'm not blaming you.
And that's, you know, but at the ten percent for ten years. I I.
If that is our only funding source, if that's the only funding source, no, we're not going to make it, but we've got to look at other ways.
But this does take in consideration other funding sources. It took into consideration your ARPA. It took in consideration your one million from the state that Michael Hop, uh, Senator Howe got us.
But other things that we can still get, we can go back and say, look, we need two million. They just gave Brunswick a million dollars to build a an ambulance building. That came from the state. Well, I think our needing water is a little more important than them needing a new place to park their ambulance. So there's money out there.
USDA, the whole thing with USDA telling us that, hey, guys, you know, you you're way under, under charging your folks. You you can't, you can't proceed. Why? Why are you just focusing on USDA? Are there other, are there?
Because we we don't only focus on USDA. We've got USDA, we've got MDE, we've got Department of Housing and Community Development. We got the community development block grants.
Are they all telling us the same?
So we all, we we reach out to all them and. We get the majority of our funding comes from USDA. They have been the most supportive of the town.
Okay.
Um, if you recall, MDE denied us funding for several years. They denied the pump station. They denied us for the water lines. We had to keep reapplying. The community development block, um, block. The Department of Housing and Community Development only offered loans for these projects. Um, the community development block grant, we are going to apply for some funding for DePaul Street. Um, Zach started the process on that one. So we do, Maddie reaches out to, if there's a grant out there, she tries.
Okay, no, I I we talked about the USDA and I I know that, you know, we dealt with them in the past, but relationships do sour.
But maybe our relationship with USDA is ready to sour here, you know, is is there another, is there?
Partner.
No.
Like an aggressive partner. Is there another entity, though, that, you know, would not be so, um.
They're not.
Banning of us and telling us what to do. You, town, must do this, you know, you were, you have to set this rate to be that.
Well, if you go to any bank, if you don't make enough money, they're not going to give you a loan. So I mean, that's, that's the reality. That's the, that's the kind of harsh reality of everything. If I go for a loan and I don't make enough money, they're not going to give me the loan. That's the way USDA is looking at it because you can't pay it back.
Okay.
And they're a great partner. I would, I would never want to give up that relationship with USDA. And there are not that many sources out there for funding.
There's other ways to pony up money, though. It's like they're really focusing on our our water and sewer rates. I think we agree with that.
I think it needs to come in.
It's the.
Why don't you come in and help us? Please.
Well, you know what, you know what I'm saying, though? I mean.
We do reach out to as many sources. I I don't like this as as I do not like this like anybody else. I don't want to do this. It's just the reality and I am only the messenger.
Look, look, this is what I'm saying. USDA is saying, okay, look, the 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 bottom line, we feel that you're not able to meet this amount. I don't like the fact that they're telling us how to meet that amount. If we can come up with another way to do it, then. But it's like, but look at them, look at the USDA literally as our bank. And if you're interacting with the bank as a business, and I don't mean the town's a business, but just deal with my allegory, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so the premise is, if you go to the bank and you say, hey, here's my business and this is what I'm doing so far, and I want to expand my business, I need to get money from you to do that. The bank's going to say a few things. They say, let's look at your business and they might provide you means by which you can enhance your business. Now, you don't have to accept them. That's true. And and that's where we are at this point. And and that's kind of where you're leaning. I feel that. I think it's my ignorance. I'm not interrupting. I think it's my ignorance of 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 a business. Running something is like a business, which I am not accustomed to. So.
And I understand that.
A household, you know, and purchasing a house.
And it's a little smaller scale.
I understand you're taking numbers to the USDA, putting boundaries on us about what we can and cannot do. But they're taking the long view on our success as a community. All right. Pardon me. They have some. Institutional knowledge. And sometimes we have to rely on that. And and sometimes when we're told things that we don't want to hear, we have to accept them. And and that's part of what this guide is. Yeah, and and that's kind of. I guess what I'm saying is they're a valid resource and they want us to do well. They're not working against us. They're actually working for us to improve our circumstances. And if that's the case, if they're able to look at, if 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 we don't go this route, what's before us, but show some sort of effort that was discussed with other commissioners this evening that, you know, that we're at least showing. We're trying something, you know, would they be willing to work with us? Or is it just going to be a flat out, nope, you know, you can't, you can't do it, you know?
And that was the initial conversation.
Excuse me.
The town needs to show a good faith effort that, you know, it is in the process, or we would be working on it, that is in the process of raising their rates. What their calculation.
I'm sorry. So, yeah, so two or three years ago, um, we did discuss that. And as long as we were in the process, you know, they would consider it. Um, they didn't say how much. They've never said how much. Um, they do their own calculations, um, based off of a variety of things. Our books and our audit.
Mr. Mayor. Hi, we're going to kind of rest our case. She's, we, all we've done is gather the information. The reason we had an outside consultant is we need some objective reality. We don't deal with numbers and. Like this and and it was really important for us to get professionals who went around and checked with other towns with their charging, how they're doing it. And and get a responsible answer back to you for information for you to make a decision. And, um. We have made cuts, you know, when I first took office, we weren't putting any money aside for vehicles or paving roads. It was all just grabbed out of the general account. As they need it. And we started a program about ten years ago, appointing about a hundred thousand dollars a year for equipment and and roads aside. And that's a a million dollars we put into that. We've taken every tranche, every bit of tranche money we have. We've been getting that. And what is that, about two point, two and a half man? Four.
For the American Rescue Plan, about close to three point two million.
And that is all going in basically to the these programs, take care of our water and sewer. And, uh, a a community can't function, like you mentioned, Jackson, Mississippi, that's a very sad situation down there. It can get to that crazy craziness, but, uh, we don't, you know, we've cut back on, uh, the 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 million, the hundred thousand dollars we began. Uh, again, we've just cut back on that. We, we're not putting that much in the roads anymore. We're not putting that much into equipment. All our equipment had to be replaced. Someone was twenty five years old and it was getting to where your was mileage equipment, carbon footprint, uh, indexes. Said you had to get rid of this stuff and and for safety and everything like that. Also, we've had a challenge. In the last couple of years where we've had to, uh, uh, some of our high positions. There's a, uh, not a supply of these type of people out there to run a sewer treatment plant. And we were amazingly low in what we were paying these people. So we've had to raise, uh, stay in the game. And we're, we're finding that out with getting our planner, a planner now that there, there's not that many people out there. But the main thing is we have been cutting back. We have been doing that. We, we had a situation where the estate just cut back how much they would give us on, you know, rightfully, we are. Our properties have increased in value. What they were, or reclute, uh, uh, drop back our yield factor on that. So we're getting that whammy. Uh, in place, but, um, we just kind of rest our case. This is all we got. We've dealt, uh, one of the first things, excuse me. Was the deal with USDA with getting a, uh, a loan. Uh, for this new sewer week treatment plan. That was one of the first things I walked in the door was to sign a note for five and a half million dollars with USDA. Uh, they, we got a grant, uh, to take care of seventy three percent, but we had to come up with another five million. So how do you pay that five million dollars? We, we had to figure that out. So we jumped, we're a couple of people are on the board here that were here that day and. We all, we, we justify, we had to raise the rate on the sewer treatment plan. And we just said, we just can't. You know, we know we need the water and I every, every year I go back and say, but we need to increase the water, but we just can't. We always run into something like the brown water. Covid. We may be putting masks back on here another week, very shortly. Yeah, we'll find out that, uh, going on. But, uh, we are tightening the belt as tight as tight as we can. And, uh, we're, we're giving not, uh, pay raises. We're asking people to take comp time. And and for things like that. And we have an event like that going on right now where, uh, one person on our staff is handling about three different jobs. And she doesn't get, or he, she, or does not get money. She gets comp time. So. Where we're not, we're we're trying to tighten the belt. Uh, I live here, I have, uh, I know some people who have land and they've had trash. Charged on their vacant lots for many years, but the reason they did that is because it, it just keeps down the price of trash for everybody. Then and, um, the index of six thousand gallons is about two hundred and fifty gallons a day, which is kind of a minimum that people, and I know probably people don't use, use that in it. But it's, it's just kind of your, it's a, we got to all contribute to the fixed, fixed cost of carrying this, but. Um, it's very important and and do what you think you need, but we're just about resting our case. And and I think she's, Kathy's about exhausting. Uh, defending this thing, but we're just bringing information to you and. And, uh, she's bringing my case to you all for consideration. And I I do not like the way raised water rates. I did not like where your sewer rates. I was sitting where Mr. Hagan was. I represent the businesses for many years and and, um. And it, it is. It's a crossover. There's a lot of problems out here with this. How we do it. I like, I like some of the discussion we've had up here. Go back to county on MS four, my board, Russ Davis and and, um. Uh, let's, let's, let's get out there and get Mr. Howe types to give us more money, but. But we are really working the, uh, we never had grants before I got here, very many. And and we've finally got to the point where we have a grant administrator who's really trying to get this money for it. It may be only matching funds, but. If fifty cents on the dollar is 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 still a good trade, but, uh, this is not going to stop, you know, from two thousand to about two thousand twenty. Um, inflation was about thirty percent. You know, over over that twenty years and, um, and then now it's all, it's a real spike right now, but, um, it's going to. it's going to continue on. It's just the way it is. And it's very expensive to live in Maryland. And I don't know how we get young people to live in Maryland. How do you, how, he asks these developers, we you know, how, how are you going to bring a house here for somebody? What is your price work? Workforce house. And, and when you're speaking, I, I come from the old world, but, um, you know, it's, we speak $300,000 for a home. That's still expensive. And it wasn't maybe expensive when rates were two, but now they're seven or eight. So there's a lot of things going on, but that's, that's our case. We've brought in all the info, all the information to you. We can certainly continue to try harder and we will. And, and you guys keep poking us and, and we, we've done it. I think we've responded. I, I don't know. Every once in a while we get a grant chart here and it's millions of dollars we've gotten in grants in the last couple of years in order to try to keep this town running. It's a special place. There's not a town like this in, in, in Maryland that has our special attributes of Basilica's and Homeland Security and vigilant hoes and the university and the university coming downtown and wonderful people live here that were out here, uh, laying the tree there. And I, it's a, the community is really special and we got to take care of all of our little people. And there are places you can make contributions to if you can go to the Seaton Center and give, buy those cars and, um, they'll get them out to these people as much as they can. We'll, we'll all try to help them out. It should be part of your protocol that everybody up in this room give money back to those people that need help. And, um, but it seems to be a great presentation and, and, and it's me. Let's ask them to do that in certain sense. And I've turned free and interact with you, but we, we, we just, this is where we are. You make a decision where you want to go. And some of your ideas are great. I agree. And I'd rather throw something at, at least try something for a couple of years. And maybe it's still an aversion kicking the can down the road, but, um, we're telling the cold, hard facts that 10, 10% a year won't catch up, but I can't be opposed, uh, you know, we gotta take care of our people and we'll do the best we can. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've heard some thoughts regarding this agenda item and we've looked at the rates. We've have some proposals or rather, uh, yeah, some proposals for a different rate structure. So sort of for the here and now, I'm not calling it to a vote yet, but sort of a straw poll. How many folks on the board at this point in time want to see consideration of a different rate? Like for example, Mr. Davis's proposed 10%.
I feel like I would just like additional information, like I said, as far as if we're going to get that. If there is a minimum due diligence that we can do to hit a point where we qualify for assistance, what is that?
Okay.
Is there?
USDA?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I think that's a really big piece of the puzzle. I'm not against raising the rates at some way. Since we're kicking the can down, you know, potentially three months. When that water bill, because that water bill, we're not going to make it by January, but is, can we raise it a little bit somewhat while we pursue additional information?
Mr. Ritz, would you consider a modified rate or you want to stick with what we've been proposed with?
Uh, modify, a modified rate. I like that idea actually.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney?
I also like modified.
Mr. Davis, are you sticking with this?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Very good.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, my mic is off. Okay, so.
And I just, I just did a real quick calculation. Maybe I'm wrong, Cole, but if at the current rate of $35, uh, people are paying $140 and FY 25, it would be up to $418.20.
What's that again? Say that again, please.
At the current rate.
Being an accountant, I like to go back to.
Yeah, 35.
Get all the numbers right.
Quarter for your three quarter.
Yes or no.
So this might clarify just a little bit better. $35 currently, uh, quarter, it would be $140, correct?
How many gallons of water each?
Uh, just the minimum. The minimum.
The minimum. Okay. Six.
And the same thing in FY 25, the bill would be up to $418.20.
I, I'd have to add it all up. I can't add it all up. I can look at the different columns. And $35 for FY 23. Let's say this person's only using 6,000 gallons.
And $104.55 per quarter in 2025.
That's correct.
So it would be $418.20.
Can I make a suggestion? So obviously we're not going to approve this as it is. Can we do scenarios tomorrow when we have all the information in front of us? Cause it's, it's kind of difficult to do this on the spot.
Correct.
And verify calculations.
That one, I just wanted to make sure I was right that, that I was looking at that big of an increase. I wanted, I was just getting him to verify.
That is also, yeah, the chart is what it, what it is.
Ms. Willis, I would never put that in front of you tonight. He's saying, we're voting on this now. No, that's not my intent. Um, by the way, we're voting on this now. Now, um, the premise is I want to make sure the board is aligned and to some degree where there's a majority that wants that direction followed. That's part one. Part two, yes, we definitely want to interact with staff to make sure that we're not causing horrors. 10%, that's one model. Is there another percent staff would consider coming forward with beyond what we've seen tonight?
No, I would ask the board to tell me what they want since, um, we did prepare what the board instructed at the last minute or at the last meeting. And since that's not what we want, I would prefer stat, uh, commissioners to tell me what percentage they want us to look at. It would be a matter of starting back at square one again with an initial meeting for you to tell me what direction you want to go after you see the options. Then we would have to advertise another public hearing. So that's kind of the timeline you're looking at. So
Okay.
I would prefer direct, um, direction, like
Sure. No, absolutely.
concrete direction.
Right. Like a vote would be taken to give that direction. Okay. Mr. Sweeney?
This will be just on the water. The sewer will stay at 3%.
I believe that from the feedback we've heard, yes.
It's just on water. So the sewer.
Yeah, the sewer can stay at 3% because we don't want to end up passes down the road to somebody else 20 years down the road and go, well, they didn't do anything to the sewer. Now we're in the same shape.
We raised the sewer a big jump.
3%.
So Mr. Sweeney, does that answer your question?
Yeah. So it's going to be the moderate.
Okay. So, um, Mr. Davis, you presented the hypothetical of 10%. Is there any other comparative number you want to use a, a rate that you want a percentage rate that you'd like to?
No, I think that would give us a base to say, hey, that's too much, or maybe we can go a little bit more. Uh,
Okay.
I, I think that would be.
Can we do a couple of different scenarios so that maybe we have a
Sure.
A concrete way to proceed.
Sure.
Um, I would recommend if you're doing 10, I'd do a 25 and a, and a 30.
And, and if we have to have a special meeting to make this go through quicker. What do you mean no? I mean, we're talking about not having water and then you're saying, no, we're not going to move the process up. I, I don't get that.
You know, I'm only one person, right?
Well, well, we got to find somebody then. We got to find a way to help. We, we're saying we're in a crisis mode and then we're going, but we're in a hurry to do it.
I'm working. Hmm.
Well, you get, you're going to have to get mad at me this time. I just, you can't, you can't have it both ways, you know, we're either in a crisis mode or we're not.
So we're looking at 10%. We're looking at a 25 year window and a 30 year window. Is that correct from what I understand? You said 25 and 30. Oh, percent. I'm sorry. I think that struck me as a long range. All right. Any other modifications or parameters for this that we want to see? No, that's not damage. It's the process.
Well, no, there's one, but I don't think it's really going to get us to where we were. And that was, that was actually taking FY 23 as written. Okay, let's, let's, let's jump it up to 44%. But then going after that, um, a less lesser increase. Like putting the 3% in earlier rather than later. But I don't think that's going to get us to where we want. I think using the 10, never mind. I strike that 20, the 10.
Don't know we have enough deputies in town, Mr. Ritz.
The 10, 25 and what was the other one? 30? We're doing three of those?
Correct.
That's, that's good.
Okay, so is there a motion to direct staff to return with water rate numbers showing a 10% increase, a 25% increase and a 30% increase? Where the 10% rate is a flat rate? Is that correct, Mr. Davis? Okay. Flat rate meaning applied to all users, 10%. Is that what you're looking for, sir? Okay, so Mr. Tabler, that's a pretty horrible motion I've made. I don't know if it gives you enough direction, or do you feel you have enough direction for coming back with, uh, a response to that that's realistic?
Kathy would work.
Ms. Willis. Yes. Okay. Fair enough. All right. I just don't want to.
I'll go.
Yeah. I mean, that's enough direction. Um,
Are we going to have a?
I will not have it for January 9th. I, I won't. I mean, you've got, I've got a full agenda already for January 9th and you've got a full agenda to get through tonight still. Um, there's just no way to turn that around by January 9th. If you guys decide you want to do a second meeting in January, we can do a second meeting in January. Um, but I know staffing wise, I just, I can't get it turned around fast.
Understood. And that's, you know, given the context of where staff is, we get it. Staff, uh, board rather, pardon me. So in a perfect world, January 9th. That's the second meeting in January. As a, as a goal for this agenda item that we're considering.
The second meeting in January, January 9th?
No.
You said January 9?
January 9th is the scheduled town meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. So second meeting would be, what would our date be? Two weeks from there?
Then you got MLK Day. This falls in there the third, I believe, the third Monday.
Right. Not to shoot from, I'm trying to not shoot from the hip. Okay, 23rd, which would give staff much more time, relatively speaking.
I will not be available that date.
Okay.
I apologize. I have, uh, previous vacation plans.
Okay.
And the 30th is a planning commission meeting. Per code.
So February. Board?
You could do it at the February town meeting.
I think you mean January 16th.
I mean, you could do a February 6th meeting because it, if we're trying to rate, to, to have the rates correlate with water billing and everything, the next round of water bills doesn't go out to the end of March anyway. So if you give direction at the February meeting, we can get it advertised in time for a March public hearing and be ready to go.
Okay. So board, I come back to you. I'm going to go back to the motion. It was someone willing to make a motion based on meeting the goals of the modification to the water rate.
What do you need a motion for? We didn't pass the ordinance. We're just giving instructions to come by.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what staff needs specific directions to go forward. Would consent satisfy staff?
I was talking, I apologize.
No worries. Would consent from the board satisfy the provision of direction to staff? Or do you need a, a formal vote?
I'm looking at Clark.
Consent would be fine.
Thank you, sir. So we've heard from the town attorney. All right. So we turn now to consent. Board members, do we have consent with the direction provided to staff related to modification of the water bill rate?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Very good. So staff, you have a unanimous consent?
You still need to vote on the, do they still need to vote on the ordinance?
Well, that is their choice. So, um, obviously you have not voted to approve the rate increases that are included in the ordinance. But the remaining changes are still I would argue necessary. So you could vote to approve this ordinance with the amendment. That all current water and sewer rates remain in effect. Or alternatively, you could decide to wait to do this all at one time when you settle on a change in the rate.
Third option, I thought we were talking about retaining or, uh, accepting the proposed sewer rate change. Is that accurate? No. Okay. So we are, we're are not accepting that.
Yeah.
I thought there was a sentiment that that, that we were amendable to that.
Yes, but yes, I, I'm thinking this is my fault.
Just, just what do you, what?
I think as one big package is the best way.
I agree.
Okay, fine. All right. So no worries.
Maybe the attorney doesn't agree with.
No, I, I actually agree with that.
Right.
I think trying to break this up right now while we're, you know, a lot is happening is probably a bad idea.
That could have been an attorney.
So we move forward. All right. So therefore.
So can you just do a motion to table it till the February?
Is there, is there a motion to table this until the February?
Sixth.
Sixth town meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Motion's really of a Commissioner Davis. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero.
And I apologize to town staff and to our, our, the people that are here that this went so long and that were pretty passionate about this. This is a big deal of people. And like I say, that, that I haven't been contacted about anything as much as I had this thing. And I just feel that we got to, got to revamp it and, and try to find a way to, to meet our end goal. And, and I apologize for that.
We turn now to the second agenda item related to, I'm on page 53, by the way, um, second agenda item related to modifying the town meeting start time.
Yeah. So, um, at the direction of the board at the last town meeting, uh, staff, um, prepared an ordinance, uh, related to changing, if you look up page 53, sorry. I cleaned up something. The commissioner shall meet on the first and third Monday. We had already changed that previously several years ago to meet only on the first Monday. This unfortunately didn't get changed at that time. So we struck through in the, in the third to, to match up with what the board approved. We have recommended based off the board, um, recommendation, a 7:00 PM start time at the town office. And then instead of constantly coming back to you as a board, the mayor and I would like to see if a holiday falls on the first Monday, the meeting will be the following Monday, instead of trying to, to do it on a Tuesday. So
Like that.
That's that ordinance.
Board?
I like it.
Yes.
Okay.
Me too.
That's an easy one.
We will get home at 11:30 instead of 12.
Very good. Okay. I'll be the grouchy commuter. All right. That having been said, um, is there a motion to accept?
Do, do you not like this?
I do not like this.
Well, why didn't you speak up?
I just did. I'm the grouchy.
That's all you said.
That's all I need to say.
Okay.
It's a long meeting. Let's keep it short. Okay. So these things having been said, is there a motion to accept the ordinance as presented?
I assume.
Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's word, uh, motion?
Second.
Motion.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Sweeney made the motion. Commissioner Davis, second of the motion. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Nay. Motion carries four to one.
Mr. President, is there any way we can, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any way we can switch three and four?
Um, staff is at, I don't know. I don't want to disrupt staff from how they had set things up. Staff has seemed a little disrupted tonight a few times.
Before Mr. Lindsay sitting there, Mrs. Lindsay keeps chuckling to keep him away.
So Mr. Lindsay called me and asked me if I thought it was going to be long and should he postpone? I said, no, we should be good. I was wrong, Mr. Lindsay. I apologize. So yes, I have no problem with that.
Okay, very good. All right. So at this time, we're therefore, we are looking at agenda item number three. We will move that and reverse that with agenda item number four. Uh, agenda item number four relates to the discussion and consideration of an offer from Richard Lindsay to purchase three acres from the town of Emmitsburg located near the wastewater treatment plant. Staff, we turn to you.
Um, okay. So I went back and I tried to come up with a consolidated Um, okay, so, I went back and I tried to come up with a consolidated timeline of how we got to where we are today. Fortunately or unfortunately, this is something that, that Zach and the Mayor predominantly worked on, I was only part of it here and there throughout everything, so I'll try to capture everything. It appears, like going back through my notes here, that in March of 2020, the town reached out to to Mr. Lindsey to see about annexing into the town, because there was a necessity for annexation. Because we needed to annex the daughter's charity for tree plantings and and to avoid donut hole, we wanted we were asking Mr. Lindsey to annex in at the same time as the daughters of charity. It did come find out later that year that according to MDE, we did not need to annex the daughter's charity and for tree plantings based off the location. Prior to that, I think the discussions were, he was offered a 10-year tax break if he would annex in. And then, we originally mandated water and sewer hookup, water is available, but sewer is not due to the location. He, and he did, at that time, express a possible interest in annexation. We're talking about a ha- a three-acre lot at the wastewater treatment plant. Right next to the wastewater treatment plant. Back in April of 21, the annexation was back on the table, but we didn't need it. They went back and forth with, with offers of three-year tax break, back to the water and sewer, that was again, not necessary. Ms. Powell sent a letter to Mr. Lindsey on April 26th of 21. Seeing where I put that. I have it here somewhere. Here, no, I, I found it. It's in another pile. Okay, so, on August of 26th, 26, 2021, Ms. Powell sent a letter to Mr. Lindsey, basically stating your prosperity as a date is adjacent to the daughter's charity, and the town is willing to and interested in determine if you would likewise wish to be annexed in the town. If you were to do so, the town will pay the costs associated with annexation, waive the collection of town taxes for three years commencing on the annexation date, and you would be eligible to connect your property to public water and sewer, should either of those systems fail. You would, of course, be responsible for any connection fees in that event, and again, sewer is not an option, it's just too far of a, of a hookup. On May 4th, it looks like, I received an email from Ms. Powell saying that she had heard from Mr. Lindsey. They discussed the annexation proposal. They discussed the 10-year waiver of taxes, not thrilled with the public water and sewers incentive. Basically, there's the three acres of the land, and I believe about a half acre currently has their stables, horses, and shed on about a half acre, is that correct? Riding ring, okay, right, right, okay, so there's no structures. There was an initial rental agreement in 1989 that permitted his use. At that time, back in 1989, I believe in 89, or shortly thereafter, he approached the town about purchasing the land. The previous administrator said no. So, basically, without going time by, line by line, that, we went back and forth with the Lenzies, it did drag out. Whether we needed the annexation, didn't need the annexation. The long and short of it is, they have made, we, he was interested in, in purchasing the land, we did have an appraisal done, which I believe you were emailed copies of, it was just quite a lengthy document. The appraisal came in at $100,000, we provided that appraisal to Mr. Lindsey, and then, we came to the Board in November of 21 and said, and asked you to determine that there was no public purpose for this property. Mr. Lindsey made an offer at the end of October in 21, basically offering 6,000 per acre for an 18,000 total via email. In May of 19, May 19, 2022, the Mayor and Mr. Lindsey had some conversations. And then, you, you official, you submitted your official offer in October of 2022, actually, it's dated September 28th of 2022. And his offer is, we would like to purchase the land located between the wastewater treatment plant fence and our property at 16737 Creamery Road. The tract contains three acres, we offer $18,000 and request that the town of Emmitsburg pay for the survey, survey and other, any other expenses involved in the transfer of property. That's. Am I missing, I'm not missing anything, no, that's all the staff has.
So, ours is the decision to accept the offer of this property?
Correct, and Mr., obviously, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Lindsey are here, if you have any questions of them.
What's the Mayor and the staff's recommendation?
A recommendation, Mr. Mayor, from yourself related to this?
It, there's been a lot of crossfire with differences, scenarios on this, and we do want to sell it, our, our attorney is quite strong on leasing the ground. It is, they think that's the most appropriate way to do it. My feeling is some is, I'd like to sell it to them.
For this sum?
No, I think that's, that's too low with them. There are so many figures, we've gone back and forth with different scenarios on this, and that these people are and wonderful neighbors, and it's, it's a very obtuse property in sense that's, uh, what's the utility of it? For agriculture, what's the use of it for industrial use? We did have one industrial user come forward who showed interest, which is what really drove a wedge in that working with the Lenzies. And it's just kind of a the deal, because somebody else said they would like to do it. And we, you know, once that happened, it kind of triggered, well, we do have this appraisal, and we do have this figure offer. And you know what, as part of the, the figures at different times, we were gonna pay for this, we're gonna pay for closing costs, we're gonna pay for that, and we came to this figure and that figure, and it, it's gone on, and they've been very patient, Lenzies, uh, over time, and when you, you know, they had to put up with putting in place that, uh, use of that pond back there for a while, and the odor on that, and and, uh, and, uh, I, 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 it, it's just something that I, I, I can't give you a price. I, I can't give you a price, it's just that you all have to help me out on that one, because I'm.
So, are you looking at the Board to provide a counteroffer?
That, the position of the attorney is we should lease the ground.
Retain it to lease, okay, got it.
Should deal with that. My, my my feeling though is that, I don't override the term, well, they're let, all the, what's called in there, things, but I would just to move it along, it's been very painful for these people.
Okay.
Yeah, over time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I guess maybe, just to, to clarify, since he referenced Ms. Powell's opinion on this for what it's worth. I believe Ms. Powell's opinion is that at the current offer, it would make more sense for the town to instead enter into an agricultural lease at market rates. Just because this is, is a town asset. But, you know, if the Board wants to, to go a different direction in terms of, you know, pursuing a sale at a different figure, yeah, that could equally make sense.
Is there a market rate determined for the lease of ag property?
I don't have that number.
Yeah, I think she also mentioned with the option to buy, so an agricultural lease at market value with the option to buy, but she did not provide what that market rate is.
Okay.
I, I guess.
Mr. Ritz?
I guess.
Mr. Bowman, Mrs. Bowman-Palit. Okay.
You go first.
No, 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 you, really.
I, I.
I was just taking a deep breath.
Okay, the only thing I was going to say, and I, I appreciate that, looking at that agricultural lease is, is a you know, that, that angle, I guess my, my take on it, and knowing the history of the property, for all intents and purposes, the Lenzies have been maintaining that property since the 80s. I don't know if, I, I know they have the riding ring corral, whatever, whatever you call it, I, I'm not aware that the town's maintained it, uh, there may be, maybe some mowing here or there, but, um, it's almost like, yes, it belongs to town, yes, it's zoned in industrial. But it's its own little world of those three acres aren't really industrial, they really have been agricultural being used by the Lenzies for all those years.
So, you're comfortable selling it, are you comfortable selling it for the price it's offered versus the appraisal of $100,000?
I don't like the 100,000, uh, I think that's too steep, and I think that that's the appraisal coming in, looking at it as a potential industrial lot, which the Mayor did reference, that we had someone with industrial plans. You know, that drove a wedge in it, in my mind, I, I don't view it, even though it's on the industrial lot, it's really an agricultural lot. So, the answer, the long, short answer to your question is I'd like to know what the other commissioners are thinking, if they like this 18, or would like to go a little bit higher than that. I'm more comfortable with something closer to that than I am 100,000.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Bowman-Palit.
Maybe, I didn't hear correctly, but I've thought, may, may, Mr. Mayor, did you say that the other person who entertained buying that was industrial purpose or agricultural?
It was industrial.
It was industrial, okay, and I mean, do we know what he was planning on offering?
No, it just, uh, we didn't get that.
That far.
And then he finally moved on to another
I see.
Opportunity.
I see. That was just a couple questions that I had right now. Is it currently being leased? Is that the model that we're in right now? No. It's just being maintained. Yeah, I'm, I'm waiting to hear the other.
Okay.
No.
Hold on for a second, Mr. Hagan, I'm gonna ask you to not interact with staff at the moment during the agenda item, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Lindsey, um, let me ask the Board before we bring you up for a moment, does anyone feel compelled to speak before Mr. Lindsey were to speak?
No, just to say that I agree with Commissioner Ritz and with what Mr. Lindsey has done over the 37 years, plus he has done other things that people aren't aware of, when the sewer plant was and out there, he helped to get some grading done and things like, he saved the town thousands and thousands of dollars over the years. And, and I'm okay with the sale.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lindsey, do you want to come forward? Please, if we could ask you to come forward, again, procedurally.
I stood up too fast.
Yeah, right. Introduce, introduce yourself if you would, and then we'll move forward. Thank you, sir.
I know you don't know the history of this.
No.
I've been up here a lot, talking about this, and if I were you, I'd be sitting there thinking, wow, $100,000, and they're offering this. So, you need to understand the usage of this property for 37 years has been agricultural, not industrial. I realize it was praised, but it was praised as industrial ground, we don't use industrial. Another very important point to this, because, being a very good point about the other interested party, I believe they were gonna use it strictly for storage. Fact remains, water and sewer, and Paul and I, it's very clear from the beginning, we are not interested in water and sewer, we will not do that. That was one of the stipulations of annexation. Not do that, we, and first of all, and it's been mentioned here earlier that so although we're right next to the wastewater treatment plant, hookup cost would be astronomical, because of the way we laid, we actually, one of the conversations the town staff, I think, looked at the feasibility of us of water and sewer, it's almost impossible. Nothing impossible, but it certainly couldn't be cost effective for this three acre, couldn't be. And that, and so, from a other interested party standpoint, I just couldn't see how it could. The lease is, I don't understand lease if we can come to a, why have an agricultural lease if we can come to a purchase agreement? And you heard, uh, Ms. Willis mentioned about, we did, and I'll make this, I'll make this clear, Paul and I haven't initiated any of this. From back to 1985, when Duke came to CEG, you've all heard that story too. And to the letter from this pal, and the conversation was that, we have not initiated this. When we did respond to Mr. Previous Town Manager about versing it, he came back in two days and said no. Which we know, that, that couldn't be right, because he couldn't come to the Board in two days. That, that's, so, it's just been a, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for comments, it's been a really I, I don't like to use the term stress, because I always say I was only in one stressful situation in my life in 1968, Southeast Asia, but this has been, this has been a real roller coaster for us, so, I just want to make sure that you understand those comments for us, and I don't want you to think we're we're lowballing it with these, with these agricultural prices, they are true agricultural prices. Now, they may not be now, but when we started this process about two years ago, and I think, I heard someone mention the 85 inflation rate. So, I just want to make sure that you didn't think we would.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney, anything?
No.
Nope, okay. Precedent. Okay, um, if another party is having access to town land and they have used it for an extended period of time, do we open ourselves up that they are now able to buy land from the town at a lower than market rate?
That's a good question. It's it's possible, but I cannot say with 100% certainty that that would be.
Okay, alright.
And I think each such situation would be unique in and of itself, I mean, this is a very unique piece of property attached to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Any other items from the Board?
Just another question, so, when Ms. Powell recommended lease with the option to buy, her thinking was that was going to benefit the town more?
Correct. I think particularly in the context of the offer that is currently on the table.
Okay.
Which, yeah, and I can appreciate that, I really could, can, I think this is a very unique situation, though. Knowing the history of this. Just saying.
So, the offer is for $18,000. Does anybody have any concerns with that, or want to see it modified? I don't think it would be reduced, I'm sorry, so you know. No interest? Okay. Okay, so, is there a motion to accept the offer as presented?
You actually need to state the offer.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, alright. So, in the motion, when the motion gets made, please state the offer as it's presented, as it's written on page 59 of 89, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And you would have to include in there the 18,000, as well as, uh, the town would be responsible for all associated fees. And what does that amount to?
You beat me to it.
Yeah, I don't know what the survey would cost, I don't know the, uh, I don't have the policy open.
I don't know what the survey cost would be either.
Yeah, that would be up to whichever surveyor we, we would use.
Only we had an appraiser nearby who could give us an estimate of that cost. Mr. Mayor, any estimate what an appraisal might cost? I'm sorry, what a survey might cost?
Not on that one, no, I don't.
Okay.
Survey.
Is it site specific? It's not a flat rate?
It's not like a house survey where it's a hundred dollars or something like that per.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
It's a unique property and they gotta do some, here we go.
Sure, yes, sir, please.
I'm not, and I certainly can't say it's the town, but I, I do believe, I'm sorry.
I do believe that Gauss was approached by the town about surveying this. When, and that's, that's why. Uh, we put in our letter about the town would. You know, pay for the survey costs. So I, I, and I'm.
I don't think we ever, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I don't think we, I, I, that's correct. We did mention that we would, we would approach surveyor. Um, I don't believe he ever gave us. The costs associated with it.
See, one more thing we've been through on this. I mean, it was just. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So as far as the town's concerned, I think the only out of pocket fee would be. The survey cost. And then attorney fees. And recording fees.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I can't give you like, I don't, I don't know how much you'll charge.
So is it? A thousand dollars, five thousand dollars. I mean, I, I just don't know surveying. I'm just wondering. Fifteen hundred?
No.
I think it'd be more than that. It's just, it's just, you know, the field, but we can go to different people and Gauss with the. I don't know, I just think. Three or something like that is in, in. It's, it's field work and measuring it all and doing all kinds of things.
I mean, you don't have to set the fee, you don't have to set the number in your motion. You just have to say.
Understand the town and take.
We're gonna accept the, the offer eighteen thousand and the town will incur all costs related to the process.
And the town's okay with incurring the expenses in the. That come with this process. I'm just thinking because here we are in a deficit for water. And now we're, you know, like. Do. And we're saying tighten our belts, so. I just, I'm just.
I, I, that's a really good point, you know, but the way I look at this, I'm, I'm trying to look at it through a different lens here. It's almost like, okay, yes, that. That property belongs to us. It's part of the wastewater treatment. Parcel, so to speak. But for all intents and purposes, it doesn't really belong to us in the sense that we haven't really done anything with it.
No, but to be devil's advocate, you can say that for a lot of pieces of land we haven't done anything with. I'm not, I, I, I mean, is the town okay with that? That's what I'm asking.
So it is a town asset regardless of its usage. It is still considered a town asset. Um, all I will say is these. It was not budgeted for, so the fees were not in the fiscal year twenty three budget. It would be a cost, additional cost incurred. By the town. That's a decision you as the board has to make if you're willing to incur those costs.
But then the income wasn't budgeted either, right? So it kind of be offsetting.
Well, the, the actual, I have to talk with, with Clark about that, but the actual revenue. From the sale of that property would go into the sewer fund. I think through that.
Plus, we also voted. That we don't need it like a year ago before, before you were on board, so.
With that, we don't.
We don't.
You don't need to like.
Yeah.
I under.
To, we, we, we voted that the town has no need for those three acres, therefore we're going to pursue of the sale of the property.
It is surplus, but it still has value as people want it, right? And the other piece that I would argue is, I don't know about you as a gardener. I'll assume that maybe you're dedicated to your backyard and you're back there working your yard pretty hard. But what if someone's not? Does that make that land eligible for someone else? Like, cause it's not being used. It's not being improved. They just own it. Does that allow another party to come in and say? Did you follow what I mean? Like that use thing?
But.
Does that?
Yes, but those three acres, it's like. It's weird because of the way that road is. It's almost like it doesn't belong to it.
It's, it's a, it's a horrible wedge. I, I totally get that. It's an irregularly shaped parcel. I also get that.
And it's probably not worth anything to anybody else, but the.
But it was appraised in the wrong category at one hundred thousand dollars. And if we were to discount it to fifty thousand dollars. We would maybe compensate Mr. Lindsay for his consulting on the grading of the land or assistance with it. And the maintenance that's gone on of the fields prior to the solar panels having gone up. But at the same time. We would be accountable for the water and sewer belt tightening and challenges we're facing there. As this might be a modest drop in the bucket, but a step in the right direction. I, I think this is, I, I would like to see this transaction occur. I'm just uncomfortable with, uh, the, the price at eighteen thousand dollars. Um, and if it's appraised at one hundred thousand dollars for agricultural use, sorry, add for industrial use and not agricultural. Correct. No, 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 I know. It's not a criticism. It's not, it's not, it's just as it is. But what I'm getting at is. Even if it's fifty percent discounted in appraisal at fifty thousand dollars. Then. There's value there for the town and maybe someone could say, well, maybe let's bring it down to forty thousand dollars. I, I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that someone's going to say, hey, I've been using this town land. Um, over here and, you know, if we find out that someone's been. You know, using the Scott Road Farm, for example, in, in a way that's not aligned with how the town wants the Scott Road Farm used. Or the back of community park or, you know, or somewhere where we find out that there's been a, a, a use over time.
I, I know you're, 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 you're focusing on what I was saying, you know, so.
No, 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 it's not just you. It's just the concept of that, of the responsibility we have to the community and the cost.
I get that, but I mean, how many other scenarios are out there? The, I mean. Are there potential scenarios already out there?
That I don't know. I, I don't, I can't answer that question.
Do you, do you feel that anybody's using town property? I don't think, I mean, what the Lindsay's certainly were doing wasn't anything illegal.
No, I'm, I'm not saying illegal or illegal. I'm, I'm not worried about that. I'm just worried about the fact that it's property and. That if it was appraised at one hundred thousand dollars and we're offering to sell it at eighteen thousand dollars.
We don't know. Other than the Scott Road, I mean, how much other property do we owe?
There's the mountain.
The whole mountain.
Well, yeah, but.
And then land up by the water, water treatment plant. I don't know. I can't speculate if there's anything similar to that. I don't know.
And I understand your argument, but I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to. I'm worried about the precedent it might establish. Okay. And. The, the market value piece.
I. I, I respect that. I just. My brain just tell me this is a one-off situation that's unique.
It could be me, then I'd send him, send you all bill for mowing it for the last thirty eight years. And then you're gonna owe him money. Yeah, no, I'm just kidding, but you know.
Basically, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So basically, there's two, two things before you. Are you going to accept the offer at eighteen thousand dollars for the, the three acres? And if, are you going to accept the town to absorb any fees associated with that? And that's, that's the matter before you, correct? Oh, no. Well. That's the way I read it, but maybe not.
We have discretion in that that we could do either handle whether it's one or it's two, I mean.
What if we ask him to? I'm good with that. See if he will.
You know, if the board wants to go, you know, collectively, sure, that's fine, but I'm saying.
Sure, I, I suppose that you could say this is what we would accept and then it would be back to them as to whether they would, yes, so that, yes.
Would you, would you ask Mr. Lindsay if he would accept the, uh? Eighteen thousand and he paid the survey?
Sure, absolutely. Mr. Davis is wondering in hypothetical if. You would. Sell the property, purchase the property for eighteen thousand dollars, uh, but be responsible for the fees related to that purchase.
He, we would consider, yes. What I, and we're, I'm a little reluctant because. I mean, I know roughly what survey would cost. I. And. I'm worried, when we go through the. We're good, because there'll be some type of fees, I would imagine, from. For zoning changes. From industrial zoning to agricultural zoning, which we would be doing. And I don't know if those would be astronomical costs or not.
Oh.
So, um. Because your, your property is outside of the town limits, correct?
Yes.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, basically, we're gonna subdivide a piece of the wa- wastewater treatment plant, which is in the town limits. To his property, which is out of the town limits. What is its own, what's your property zone for the county agriculture? Okay, that I don't know the answer to that question. But any, what, what my recommendation would be, and I know the mayor and I talked about it. The in-house fees that the town would normally require, you know, subdivision and all that, you know, that. Because this was basically town initiated, that, and I know there was discussions that we wouldn't charge those in-house fees for the subdivision. And all things like that. I think it's fair to ask for him to pay for the survey, yes. I don't know about the zoning change with the county that I'm not first in.
And I don't, I don't know that either, sitting right here.
We would pay for the survey cost if, if you accept our offer. We would pay for the survey cost.
Would these three acres still remain in town limits? Is that what you're saying? No?
No, he's gonna, he's gonna subdivide, basically subdivide it. It's gonna become part of his property.
Okay.
Which is outside the town.
That's what I was hoping, but then I'm thinking, wait, maybe it was gonna be like a weird situation where like, you know, you're, you're out of the county, but you. You also own three acres and then got paid town tax or whatever.
No.
There's another piece that we've, I'll just say this jokingly, there was, um, going back to my years at my previous life with State Highway. There's an adverse possession, but I don't think it applies here because it's a town. But the fact remains is, and. I go back to Frank's comment. We have, we've utilized. The riding ring portion and the back portion, which is a very small portion of it. The front portion, the biggest portion. We have maintained in pristine condition for the town, and that's what's been so good about this. Uh, I just wanted to bring that up. I, I, again, I don't want any of you to think that we're out here trying to lowball it. We're not. Uh, but to answer your question, we would pay for a survey cost if you accept our offer.
The survey and the transfer expenses. When the, when it says expenses involved in the transfer, does that mean, does that mean? The sub, the zoning subdivision? The second part of that second sentence, I'm assuming.
I believe it would, yes, but.
Any other expenses is. Pretty broad, so yes, I would say that would encompass.
So you want to add that or not?
No, I'm, I'm okay.
So you're okay with.
Yeah, you want to make a motion?
Mr. Lindsay. Making the purchase at this price and paying for the survey. But the town would be responsible for. Transfer related expenses such as the zoning change and subdivision change.
We don't have anything to do with the zoning change because that's the county.
That's a county expense, potentially.
Any in-house associated fees, the town would be responsible, would, would. Yes, would be responsible.
In-house subdivision fees.
So basically subdividing those three acres off of our property. Correct, yes.
Do you want me to take a stab at this?
Sure.
I'll make a motion with what you just said. I make a motion. That we accept the offer of eighteen thousand dollars for the three acre. Parcel located between the wastewater treatment plant and the property at sixteen seven thirty seven Creamery Road. Can this be a multi-port motion?
Yes.
And, um, that. The purchaser pay for the survey of this parcel. And. The in-house subdivision expenses involved with this property will be handled by the town of Emmitsburg.
I think that's a fair summary of what's been discussed.
Want me to vote on that?
Thank you. I made my motion.
Okay, is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion? I'll second. Thank you, sir. The motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against, please say nay. Nay. Anybody abstaining?
Just tell no. I'll abstain for no good reason. No, I do have a reason. I, I don't feel like I know there's a, this is a really rich history. I just don't feel like I grasp. And appreciate what has gone into this.
I was gonna, we were gonna invite you out. Then I thought it would be too, I didn't want to sound too much one side. I understand that.
I just don't feel like I under, grasp the, the history like you do.
You can certainly abstain if you choose.
Okay, I abstain.
Or you can vote in favor or against. I mean, it's, it's.
I will abstain.
You will stand. Okay, so the motion carries three to one Commissioners Davis, Sweeney, Ritz voting in favor of it. Commissioner O'Donnell voting against Commissioner Pollitt, Bowman Pollitt, sorry, abstaining. And Mr. Lindsay, I rarely ever justify the rationale why I vote for things other than what we go through and process. And I will hear for you. Okay. I don't feel that you are low balling us. I don't think it's a personal thing whatsoever, but what I look at is the market and my responsibility to the town. And to generate income for the town in an opportunity like this, my concern is that we're selling three acres of prime. North Frederick County land and a beautiful farm.
Thank you.
Okay, truly, right? Uh, and enhancing that property value at the cost of the town. And I had felt that if we were able to move the needle a little bit higher on the cost, that would be more equitable for all, for all parties. Again, uh, my hat is off to you. You've done well. You've gotten three acres of northern Frederick County land for eighteen thousand dollars, and that's excellent. So that's, that's my rationale. And again, zero personal issues on that one. And, um. Again, I rarely ever, ever provide a rationale. So I just felt. Interpersonally, I at least owed you that much as to why I voted against this. So there it is, sir. Okay, so, thank you. All right, we move now to agenda item. Number four, it had been number three, no? Yes.
You're right.
Okay, so we move it to four, and this is for consideration approved, approval of three-year sewer relining bid. We turn to town staff.
Okay, so three years ago, about four years ago, um, working with, uh. And, um. As everybody knew, or some of the board know, know, knows. The INI continued to be a problem, a significant problem with the pump station. We were constantly dealing with overflows. The major source of that would be the inflow and infiltration into the sewer lines, uh, through our older sewer lines in town. So year one, we brought a bid to you to, um, reline a, a portion of town. It was very successful. So we brought you, three years ago, we bought you a three-year relining bid, so we could lock in the basic prices. For three years and continue, uh, relining sewer lines. So that three-year bid has, is now up at the end of this year. We would like to pursue another three-year sewer, sewer relining bid. So we prepared an RFP. It was published by the town on September seventh. The bids were due to the town. On October, Friday, October fourteenth. The bids were opened on Tuesday, November fifteenth at nine AM by myself, Ms. King, Mr. Brantner, and Mr. Click. These were advertised in, on the public notice under the RFPs on the town website. Notice on MS, MML classifies, uh, RFP published on the email and marketplace. Public notice on the town Facebook page, and we did send emails with the RFP to, uh, potential bidders. Project funding for this. Project funding for this will be Department fifty Sewer Fund, a budgeted asset item, which the board already approved upwards of a hundred to a hundred and twenty, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand for this year dedicated to sewer relining. In the RFP, we were looking for a three-year bid on the following items. The six-inch CIP liner, eight-inch, ten-inch, twelve-inch, fifteen-inch, all lateral connections, reinstated sanitary lateral connections, mobilization and traffic control. Keeping in mind that each project will be unique depending on the number of linear feet it is and any traffic control that might be necessary. But these, these items will be locked into place for three years. We received nine total bids, which you'll see on page fifty-six. To kind of have a fair overview of them, we added up, the total pricing includes for each item requested above, the staff picked the top four. So we, we added the price for the six-inch, the eight-inch, ten-inch, twelve-inch, fifteen-inch, the price for lateral connection, the price for reinstating sanitary lateral connections, what their mobilization fee would be and what their traffic control fee would be. And then you'll see the contractor listed with the total amount. And that would be just taking into consideration just one, one price point. We did ask for a minimum of three-year warranty. However, as you can see, we only received one three-year warranty and one ten-year warranty. On page, so after that, we, we kind of selected four, picked top four based off of different items, including pricing and the warranty. And then Jared and Wayne and our two new operators, Warren and Donnie, they all sat down and reviewed each four bids individually. On page fifty-seven, you'll see their breakdown of how each contractor priced out based off of the, the requirements for the different line, line sizes, as well as lateral connection, mobilization, and traffic control. We also have what their year warranty, what their warranties were, the locate, location of their businesses and the technology used. And how many years of experience they've had. So based off of all the research that they, that staff did, our recommendation based on the RFP is to choose Guyer Brothers. We felt they would have the, would be the best due to their warranty and the material used. They use a different technology that requires no chemicals and only steam and cold air to form the liner to the existing pipe. Basically, after comparing the price per foot, lateral reinstatement, mobilization, and traffic control costs, we found that they were, those four were pretty much close in cost. However, Guyer Brothers stood out far above the competitors with their ten-year warranty. The next closest was Amliner with a three-year warranty. All the companies, with the exception of Guyer Brothers, submitted a pro, a proposal using CIPP, which is basically cured-in-place pipe. This technology uses chemicals to harden and cure the liner. Guyer Brothers uses a different technology called thermoform. Thermoform uses no chemicals. They only use steam to soften the liner. And then once it's pulled through the existing pipe, it's pressurized with cold air to cure. And so what, so once it's cured, we'll have a hardened PVC liner. It's significantly more flexible than even the standard PVC pipe, greatly reducing the risk of cracking in the future. It's, and if we need, if there is also any like, likely, unlikely event that the liner would need to be removed, it can be done very easily by re-steaming and extracting the pipe. One of the big pluses is that it does not use chemicals, so there's no chemical reactions. There's no emissions during the installation process. And, and it's by far the most environmentally friendly option out there for sewer relining. So based on all that information, staff recommendation is Guyer Brothers for a three-year sewer relining bid.
Any further questions for staff? Mr. Ritz?
I guess, I, I mean, I like your recommendation, the ten years jumps out, the warranty, I like that, that fact. That kind of scares me, though, is there a catch to it? Because they're so far.
So I actually had Sabrina reach out to references. So we checked with three different companies or three different organizations that have, have used them. And every single one of them had nothing bad to say, there were no, they were very satisfied. They had great communication and minimal change orders, and any change orders were reasonable. No, we didn't ask about the need for a ten-year warranty, but I think it's just the way that type of technology can be guaranteed for up to ten years.
That was my next question, I was actually gonna direct it to Commissioner Sweeney because he's our expert in, in, in a matter here. So the, this, this, what are your thoughts on the thermoform technology?
It's better for the environment. I've used it, or I've been with a company that's used it. But our county, I've also been with the chemical type two, which has to be used with chemicals to, to pour it through. So I would go with, with the, with the water one, that's more. I might, I don't, I've never put it in myself, but I watched it put it in.
So it's better for the environment, but for, from another standpoint, getting, getting, getting the work, doing the job it needs to do. You, you would, you're satisfied that it's a good technology.
For the inside, I've, I've seen the piece that was cut out. They'll go through with a little camera or a robot saw. And wherever those holes and stuff you have to cut out for, where lines come in, they'll do that. And it's, it's really interesting to watch.
So as a robot cut the lateral hole?
Yeah, cuts the holes that were for storing with the houses and stuff, it'll cut the laterals, it'll cut the main lines for other, if you have junctions coming in.
And durability-wise?
At last, I've never seen it not last, though. I've never dug up a piece that hasn't, it, it looks, it, when it's cooled, it's just like a piece of PVC plastic.
I mean, normally I'd like to look, I always like to look at the, the lowest, the lowest bidder unless we know that, that's like, eh. But they're only coming in a little bit more than that, so I, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with this recommendation. So slightly higher than the lowest bidder and comes with this new technology and the ten-year warranty, so I'm satisfied with it.
Great, okay. Any other questions for staff or comments related to this? Okay, so is there a motion to accept the Guyers Brothers, the Guyer Brothers bid? In the sum of, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit off here.
I, you actually don't need to do a sum, because it's just, it was more of a comparable price point.
Okay.
You can just accept Guyer's three-year sewer relining bid.
These prices per foot, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So as outlined in the bid.
So moved.
So moved, okay.
Thank you for that.
Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Polit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. Okay, we now turn to item number, sorry, agenda item number five. Mr. Davis, would you want us to take a brief recess? Okay, we're going then, all right, yes, sir. Okay. For consideration approval of reversible forest conservation easement with Daughters of Charity. A, the Daughters of Charity, the Daughters are providing the town a nine-point-two-zero-one-three acre revertible forest conservation easement to the town in order to plant trees for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-eight MS four permitting, permitting term. Parcel located on east side of US fifteen, we now turn to staff.
I'm actually gonna turn it over to Clark.
Yes, sir.
Let's give Kathy a break, shall we? So on page sixty-eight, you can see the beginning of the actual revertible forest conservation easement. So essentially, the Daughters of Charity are granting the town an easement on their property for the purpose of entering, planting, and maintaining trees for purposes of MS four credit. It's pretty standard, I believe that we actually already have such an easement on this exact piece of property. And this easement is identical to that one. So just the highlights, you know, the town is responsible for the planting, the maintaining of the trees themselves. And if you look at page seventy-five of your packet, there is a maintenance agreement, which is an exhibit to the easement itself. This just sets forth, as I said, the town's responsibilities and then limits the Daughters' ability to utilize the property in light of the town's easement. I'm happy to answer any additional questions on this.
Any questions for staff?
No. I don't.
No, I was satisfied the last time we, we went through it and I, I did, I did review it and it all jives with the last presentation that we had.
Okay, so, making sure we have the.
But I don't know about Commissioner Bowman-Polit.
I saw the nod, I thought.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
You were quiet, okay.
Yeah.
I did see a nod, I didn't move without. All right, so therefore, is there a motion to accept? Or is there a motion to accept the Daughters of Charity provision of the town to the town, a nine-point-two-zero-one-three acre revertible forest conservation easement to the town in order to play, to plant trees for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-eight MS four permitting term with the parcel being located on the east side of US fifteen as designated in the agenda item.
I move.
Is there a second for Commissioners Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Polit, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. All right, we now turn to our next item. Okay, agenda item number six. Yes, Mr. Ritz?
I was jumping ahead of the agenda for next meeting.
Good man, all right.
Missed a page.
All right, I got one.
I forgot about this one.
One for the home team. For consideration, amending the hours of the farmer's market. We turn to Commissioner Bowman-Polit.
Yes, I know the town staff has been, has done their due diligence trying to revitalize the farmer's market and hearing that one of the number one complaints that they have is the hours, they, you know, farmers or vendors say it's just not worth the time to bake the truck up to Emmitsburg, especially with the price of gas for such a short window. And I, I mean, the first thing we can take a stab at is let's extend the farmer's market's hours and see if that, if we could get something to stick with that. I don't know that it'll work, but it's worth a try. And maybe vendors would be more enticed to come. I mean, for all I know, we still, it won't work, but it's worth a try.
Do we want an eight-hour period or do we want to eight to eight or eight to six or?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I was thinking at least, it's right now, what's, what is it, three to six? I'm looking at.
It's not enough time.
It's not enough time.
It's three to six currently.
I mean, in summer hours, it stays like, late. So I was thinking at least until eight o'clock at night. I, I, I'm willing to entertain other ideas.
I would say the whole, just give them the whole day, why would it hurt not to sit there the whole day?
Yep, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with whatever.
It's coming up anyways, it might as well just, it'll pay them to sit there.
Yeah.
But are we, are we gonna do it during the week, on a Friday, or are we, are we changing it to Saturday?
Yeah, I think in our conversations that we've had with vendors, there are so many other places that do farmer's market that already set Saturdays or Sundays or different times that this time, at least in this area, was
Fridays.
Fridays, they weren't committed to other places.
Right.
Um, you know, I agree, having it later for people that work, you know, especially Fri- Friday rush hour traffic, how bad is that? Commissioner O'Donnell, you're getting home about eight o'clock. So, but I understand, you know, the, the traffic concern, especially on a Friday. You know, you might be able to then, and, and, you know, get different people, you know, we've explored having somebody play acoustic guitar, have the face painter, have kettle corn, have just different things. And I think if you extend the hours, you might have a better chance of getting some of those people also to come in. So I think it's a great idea. I mean, I don't know about all day, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know. But I do think eight, eight o'clock or eight-thirty.
I mean, if they feel like they have to commit all day.
Right.
I don't want that to be a deterrent.
No, I mean, usually you can come in and leave as you want, so they can come in and stay eight to twelve for four hours and then leave. But there might be people come in during different times of the day. So they might not be able to come in eight, but some might come at ten and some might. I mean, I don't know if all of them will come at the same time. You might not get all the same vendors coming all at the same time. But if you give them a window of time, they can come from eight to ten, you might have different vendors come in, eight to eight or whatever.
Yeah, I'm just worried that it, then it becomes a really hidden miss. You know, like, I'll have to be there at eight to get the apples and I'll have to be there at two to get this and I'll be there at six PM to get the honey or whatever it may be. I, I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm trying to weigh their time versus what does it work, what will make it worth their time? If sitting there all day and they don't get the sales, you know, I'm afraid they'll peter out early. Do we, I mean, do we have the flexibility to say something like two to eight? And then change it if we, I mean, is it hard to make the change?
So, so what we did this year for the calendar, because we knew you guys were gonna vote on changing it, we did not put time on the calendar. We just put farmer's market on Friday. So changing the hours, that's, that's easy to do, it's to put it out on ninety-nine, Facebook alerts. That's, that's not an issue for us at all at the staff level. I do like the start time of, of two o'clock. I think, I think, you know, I do understand what you're saying, Commissioner Sweeney. But I, I'm afraid that you might not get people to come in the mornings. Or if I'm a far, farmer market participant, you know, I want everybody there when I'm there and, and not have to schedule it out. I, I don't know. I mean, we did have one gentleman that just asked if he could extend, extend the days and he continued to set up even after it was technically over. So, um.
I mean, what we could do is start with maybe two to eight, and then if we get vendors, ask them, you know.
Be there longer.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
So two PM till eight PM, is that what the hope is? All right, two to eight PM? Okay, therefore, is there a motion to modify the farmer's market hours from two PM until eight PM? As per staff guidelines or staff calendar?
You can just leave it without that, just amending the farmer's market hours.
Two to eight PM.
Tim move.
Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, it's been seconded by Commissioner Davis, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Motion carries five to zero.
I'm trying.
Okay, so we now turn to staff for our lean agenda for January ninth, the January ninth meeting.
Hey, it's still Tuesday, by the way, just, just letting y'all know.
It's actually not as bad as it looks, honestly. I have seven items. The first, number one would be for consideration approval of bearing construction change order for removal of trees on the dam at the Silo Hill Basin. This is a mandatory requirement from Frederick County Soil Conservation per MDE guidelines. This change order would be covered by the grant we already have for this project. Number two is for consideration approval of agreement with Barton and La Judas for Silo Hill Basin Tree Removal Engineering Services. This is part of the change order request that was not in the initial scope of work. Again, this two will be covered with additional grant monies. Number three, for consideration approval of the HAC estimate, H-A-C-H, for the chem scan upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. The board previously approved a similar upgrade at the water treatment plant. This was actually included as an asset project for the wastewater treatment plant in the fiscal year twenty-three budget that the board approved earlier this year. Number four, for consideration approval of resolution twenty-twenty-three dash oh-one bond reduction request for the Irish Town Road Bond Project, or not, yeah, for the Irish Town Road Project. Number five, for approval designation of the second tranche of, uh, the American Rescue Plan monies. Number six, for consideration approval of twenty-twenty-three dash oh three amendment to Title sixteen, changes to subdivision fees. This ordinance will amend subdivision plan review, annexation and forest conservation procedures related to, um, collecting fees from, uh, developers. Number seven, for consideration approval of twenty-twenty-three ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh two amendment to Title seventeen, changes to zoning fees. Again, this ordinance will amend the collection process for zoning fees. It doesn't change the fees. It just changes the process. That's what, that's what I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have agenda item for anywhere?
Um, and this may not be appropriate given our agenda at this time, but I did, um, hear from Silo Hill that they, I don't remember the street, with winter coming and the snow emergency route, uh, there was the concern that when snow emergency is in fact, in effect, there's no place. If they have very short driveways and therefore if they have so many more cars, there's really nowhere to park. So they had asked, is it possible to make it on one side so it leaves the other side for a place for them to park their cars? I don't even know if that's something we can deal with.
Didn't they present this to us in the past?
So, yeah, I need to look at the code on snow removal. Um, there are very specific areas that's designated for snow removal as a snow emergency. When the snow emergency plan goes in effect, I need to actually look at the streets and see which ones are. I know previously all streets in town were deemed snow emergency route and no parking, so you had to get your vehicles off the road altogether, and then they lessen the restriction. But I'll check the code. So do we, what road? Do you remember? Or you can email me if.
It's the main road that goes around, the, the one that, you, the first exit past the, um, gas station. I don't know what that word's called. It goes all the way around, comes back around in the horseshoe.
Oh.
Back on Robin Dale.
Oh, yeah.
Robin Dale.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that.
Thank you.
And then if, 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 I'll get you the information and if you want to add it, then I'll reach out to the mayor and Commissioner O'Donnell. We can add it.
Okay.
I know what you're saying. It makes sense. I, I, I know exactly where you're.
Yeah.
Any other agenda items proposed or administrative business items? Is there a motion to accept the agenda attribute?
I'll second that.
Motion's made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Say aye.
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 This was also, let me repeat just for sake of clarity. Motion was made by Commissioner Sweeney. It was seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is that correct? Right, okay, thank you. And the motion carried five to zero. Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting, which is because it was for the sake of.
Oh, the mic was off.
Correct, my mic was off.
I didn't really. You're so close.
Very good, yes, yes, sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Very good. So the motion is made to close the meeting by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries five to zero. The closing of our meeting on December sixth is eleven forty-five PM. Merry Christmas.